We call the annual town meeting of the town of Whitman for 2023 to order. Constable, can we have a count of the voters present, please? We have a quorum. All right. We could please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing for an opening prayer from Pastor Scott Wasden of the First Congregational Church.
Let us pray. Holy One, you are known by many names, but you are above all them. We thank you for this opportunity to gather together tonight as friends, neighbors, and fellow citizens. We ask your blessing upon these proceedings. We ask that all the topics before us are covered with a spirit of serious discernment, respect, and collaboration for all present. We continue to ask your blessing upon the honorable and brave men and women that serve our community so well, the leaders, local law enforcement, fire and EMT, and medical professionals. Lord, thank you for the honor and privilege for all of us to call Whitman home. We ask you in your holy name, amen.
Please remain standing for a moment of silence for the following town employees who have died during the past year. Francis Marini, moderator. Robert Harris, Whitman Fire Department. Frank Tenore, Whitman Hansen Regional School District. Herbert Waffer, Sealer of Weights and Measures. Thomas Fox, School District. Ronald Stunsey, Cable TV Committee. Rosalie Rodeck, Town Hall Employee. Elizabeth Damesito, Election Worker. Stephen Zulon, Election Worker. James Redgate, Wiring Inspector. Patricia Mallett, Conservation Commission. Deanna Birmingham, Department of Public Works and Town Collector's Office. Paul Van Bennet, the School District. Helen LaRosi, Election Worker. Marie Layler, Historical Commission and Weymouth Cert Member. And Elaine Cox, Council on Agent. Thank you. Will the tellers please come forward to be sworn?
If you will not only swear to perform your duties, get to count the tellers lawfully and impartially to the best of your ability, so help me God.
Thank you. And will the clerk please read the warrant?
Plymouth SS to either the Constable of the town of Whitman. Greetings. In the name of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, you are hereby directed to notify and warn the inhabitants of the town of Whitman qualified to vote in elections and town affairs, to meet in the town hall in said Whitman on Monday, the first day of May 2023 at 7:30 PM, then and there to act upon the following articles. Article 1 as amended through Article 43. And you are hereby directed to serve this warrant by posting up attested copies thereof in not less than eight public places in town, seven days at least before the day of said hearing. I mean, said meeting, excuse me. Hear and fail not, and make due return of the warrant with your doings thereon to the town clerk at the time and place of holding said meetings given under our hands this 24th day of April 2023. Board of Selectmen, Randy G. Lamatina, Chairman. Daniel L. Salvucci, Vice Chair. Justin R. Evans, Clerk. Dr. Carl F. Kowalski, Member. And Sean M. Kane, Member. Warrant at a Station. I hereby certify that by virtue of the within warrant, I have posted eight copies of said warrant in various sections of the town with two copies in each precinct dated April 24th, 2023, attested by Joseph E. Baumdair, Constable. Thank you.
All right. I'd like to go over some of the rules and procedures for tonight's town meeting. All voters must be sitting in the designated sections. Unless voted otherwise, all votes will be by voice vote. If I cannot tell or if the vote is immediately questioned by five voters, a standing vote will be taken. The budget of the budget line items, Article 2, we are voting on a consolidated budget this year. Budget worksheet packages with detailed breakdowns of each department budget are available at the back of the room, but we will be voting on the lines contained in the warrant itself. We'll take a five-minute recess before the before Article 2 to study the line items. I will then ask if there are any questions on budget line items in 10 line segments. If anyone has a question on a line item, please shout question and the number of the line. After we go through all of Article 2, I will reread the question line items. All line items not questioned will be voted as a package on the Finance Committee's recommendation. We will then have discussion on votes on each of the question line items. Massachusetts General Laws, Articles 1, 2, 3 of the town bylaws, and Roberts Rules of Order govern the running of this town meeting. All amendments must be signed and in writing. Speaking procedures. If you wish to speak, please raise your hand and be obvious. There's a distance between us here. Sometimes it's difficult to see. After being recognized, stand and go to the nearest microphone, state your name and your address, confine your comments to the article or question on the floor, and you may not speak on the same question more than once until everyone who has not been heard has had a chance to speak. Thank you for attending. This is important business that is essential to the function of our town. My goal is to complete all business tonight, and I ask that you remain for the duration of this meeting. In the event that we cannot finish tonight, I ask that you return tomorrow night. I want to thank the Finance Committee. These these people sitting right up front here, they put in many hours working with the town administrators, the Board of Selectmen, department heads, and others to study each of the articles that pertain to the finances and give the thoughtful and considered recommendations on each to this meeting. The committee's recommendations on each applicable article are found in the warrant. These people are volunteers. They perform an essential service to the town. Please join me in thanking them for their service. And if anyone is interested in serving on the Finance Committee, you may contact me through the Selectmen's office or the Clerk's office. Any questions regarding procedures tonight? All right, then, I'd like to introduce our town administrator, Mary Beth Carter.
Mary Beth Carter, 896 Auburn Street, Town Administrator. Good evening. I just wanted to take a minute and introduce myself to those of you that do not know me. I was the former treasurer-collector for the town. I've worked for the for Whitman for almost 19 years, and I've lived in Whitman for most of my life. My husband and I have raised three children, all of whom have attended the Whitman Hansen Regional School System and all of whom are still Whitman residents today. On February 21st of this year, I was hired as the town administrator, and I am truly invested in this town. While I started in the middle of the busy budget season, I can certainly say that this year's budget season was challenging for everyone, the town of Whitman, the town of Hansen, and the Whitman Hansen Regional School District. I was very pleased and relieved that we were all able to come to a compromise that was able to work for everyone. One of my goals in the next few months is to develop is to develop a budget calendar for next year's budget that will include meeting with all the stakeholders involved in the budget process as early as possible. I'll be reaching out to the town administrator in Hansen, the superintendent of the Whitman Hansen Regional School District, FinCom, and our finance team to begin discussions which should help us all prepare a final budget earlier in the process. I feel that if we start the dialogue earlier than we have in the past, we will all be better able to balance and present our respective budgets next year to the voters. As most of you know, Frank Lineham, the former town administrator, originally retired back in October of 2020. At the request of the Selectmen, he offered to come out of retirement when the town had a vacancy in the Selectmen's office to serve as the interim town administrator. Frank has been an integral part of the town's leadership these past nine months. His many years of experience as town administrator and his willingness to step back into the role as interim town administrator when he was needed the most has been a tremendous benefit to this town. Today is Frank's last day, and this evening is Frank's last town meeting as a town official. Frank will be, as I call it, officially re-retiring tonight. I'm personally so thankful, as is the board, that Frank stepped up when the town truly needed him the most. Please join me in thanking Frank for his unselfish willingness to serve the town in the capacity as town administrator for a second time.
Now, Mr. Rick Anderson is chairman of the Finance Committee.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Rick Anderson, 237 Stetson Street, Finance Committee Chair. I take this opportunity to just give a brief overview of the deliberations of this committee before town meeting. The warrant you have before you is best described this year as a consensus document. And, you know, despite some distracting and disruptive moments, this budget is a collaboration between the Board of Selectmen, the Finance Committee, and every town department. In the very brief window between the final draft and this meeting, this committee reviewed each warrant article and every line from the Article 2 budget worksheet to make recommendations to this body. Without question, the most challenging aspect of deciding how to allocate the limited resources of this community is the short amount of time that we are given for receiving a final budget assessment from our largest town department. So as Mary Beth said, that's something that we need to collectively work on and start the process a little bit earlier. This town has committed a lot of resources to recognize the fiscal challenges that lie just over the horizon. With very large capital projects to be completed in the near future, we must continue to find ways to create sustainability in all departments. I urge every taxpayer in attendance tonight to look at every line of the budget worksheet, ask questions, and become more aware of the consequences of our collective decisions. Finally, I'd like to take a moment and recognize the efforts of the Board of Selectmen, our new town administrator, and our acting assistant town administrator. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. It truly is a team effort. Thank you.
Thank you. Article 1 amended. To see if the town will bring in their vote for the following town officers. One moderator for three years, one town treasurer-collector for three years, two selectmen for three years, one assessor for three years, two PK-12 Whitman Hansen Regional School District Committee members for three years, two Department of Public Works commissioners for three years, two public library trustees for three years, one Board of Health member for three years, and to choose all other necessary officers. The polls for the election of officers will be opened in said town hall at 9:00 in the forenoon on said Saturday, the 20th day of May 2023, and kept open until 5:00 in the evening, both of which things will constitute the annual meeting, and this call is issued in accordance with the vote of the town passed July 29, 1902. Do I have a motion? And a second discussion. All in favor of Article 1 is amended, say yes.
Yes.
Oppose, no. Article 1 is adopted unanimously. The following articles numbered with the preceding P are appropriations for the current FY 2023 or prior fiscal year and will be expended in the current fiscal year FY 2023. Article P 3, to see if the town will vote to transfer $5,252 in free cash to be added to the Fire Department salaries line, reference line 16 of Article 2 of the May 2, 2022 Annual Town Meeting, to supplement the salary of the administrative assistant of the chief or take any other action relative thereto. Motion? Motion and a second discussion of P 3. Chief.
Good evening. Tim Clancy, 21 Bloss Road, Fire Chief. I just wanted to elaborate on this. We had a administrative assistant retire, and I hired another one. There was a month overlay, and this amount is to cover the month that month that they worked together in training. Thank you.
Further discussion of P 3. All in favor of Article P 3, say yes.
Yes.
Oppose, no. Article P 3 is adopted unanimously. Article P 4, to see if the town will vote to transfer $40,000 from free cash to be added to the Fire Department salaries line, reference line 16 of Article 2 of the May 2, 2022 Annual Town Meeting, to supplement the salary of the Department firefighter paramedics or take any other action relative thereto. A motion and a second discussion of P 4. All in favor of adopting Article P 4, say yes.
Yes.
Oppose, no. Article P 4 is adopted unanimously. Article P 5, to see if the town will vote to appropriate $7,236 in the water sewer retained earnings to pay Xylem Water Solutions USA for services July 1, 2021 to June 30, 2022, for Fliggett Cloud Scada Pump Station monitoring services to monitor 12 sewer pump stations or take any other action relative thereto.
Yes.
Do I have a motion and a second discussion of P 5? All in favor of P 5, say yes.
Yes.
Oppose, no. Article P 5 is adopted unanimously. Article P 6, to see if the town will authorize the Department of Public Works Department to pay $625 from its current expense line to pay a prior year bill to the Peterbilt store for repairs to a vehicle, which invoice was not received prior to the close of the fiscal year 2022 or take any other action relative thereto. Motion and a second discussion of P 6. This this article requires a nine-tenths vote to pass because it does involve the prior fiscal year, so if there's any objection to it, we'll have to do a standing count. All in favor of Article P 6, say yes.
Yes.
Oppose, no. Article P 6 is adopted unanimously. Article P 7, to see if the town will vote to appropriate $140,880.53 from the Reserve for Appropriation Cable Access Account to fund public education and government access programming in accordance with Massachusetts General Law Chapter 44, Section 53F and 3/4, or take any other action relative thereto. A motion and a second discussion of P 7. All in favor of P 7, say yes.
Yes.
Oppose, no. Article P 7 is adopted unanimously. Article P 8, to see if the town will vote to appropriate $1,940 in free cash to pay a prior fiscal year FY 2022 bill for $540 and $1,400 for the current fiscal year FY 2023, to general code to update and maintain the town's general and zoning bylaws or take any other action relative thereto. A motion and a second discussion of P 8. All right, this also requires a nine-tenths vote to pass. All in favor of Article P 8, say yes.
Yes.
No? Article P 8 is adopted unanimously. Article P 9, to see if the town will vote to accept a parcel of land, A, I'm sorry, A, to see if the town will vote to accept a parcel of land located in Rockland, Massachusetts, and another parcel located in Whitman, Massachusetts, known as Camp Alice Carlton, convey to the town in a deed dated April 30, 1985, and recorded with the Plymouth County Register of Deeds Book 6067, Page 119 and B, furthermore, to authorize the Board of Selectmen after compliance with all applicable provisions of Massachusetts General Law Chapter 33B, to dispose of the parcel located in Rockland, Massachusetts by either, one, selling such parcel to the town of Rockland, or, two, selling or leasing for a period of up to 25 years such parcel to a nongovernmental organization for the purpose of creating ballfields and/or other recreational use, or take any other action relative thereto. We have a motion and a second discussion of P 9. Yes, sir.
Eric Jewbert, 291 Pine Street. I'd like to make an amendment.
We have a motion to amend P 9 to remove Section B and replace with the following. B, furthermore, to authorize the Board of Selectmen after compliance with all applicable provisions of Massachusetts General Law Chapter 33B, to maintain the parcel of land known as Camp Alice Carlton in Rockland, Whitman, Massachusetts, as conservation land under the control of the Conservation Committee, or take any other action relative thereto. Do we have a second? Discussion of the amendment, the proposed amendment. Mr. Jewbert.
If we're good to go with... I can give you a brief history of it if anyone wants, or if we can just go to the vote if that's accepted.
History.
History, okay. 1950, Girl Scout Council met. Dr. and Mrs. Ralph Calvin told the land of Plymouth Street that they would like to deed to the Whitman Scouts for camp to be named Camp Alice Carlton in memory of Dr. Calvin. '51, the family deeded the land in Whitman, Rockland to the Girl Scout Council. Granted also the right unto each and every church in the town of Whitman to obtain Christmas trees and other greenery for use at Christmas. And when said real estate ceases to be used as a Girl Scout camp, and then the title shall cease and be vested in the town of Whitman with the wishes that it be used for recreational purposes of the citizens of the town of Whitman and be called the Alice Carlton Memorial Park. '52, they built the road into the camp. '54, Skitty Casoni was pinned by the Girl Scouts and worked in development. Rockland started using the camp in '55. In '61, Whitman was required to join the Plymouth Bay Girl Scout Council. Land was turned over to Plymouth Council. In 1970, the Caltons donated the home and farm as a caretaker home for the camp. A portion of the camp, unfortunately, in '73, the Noxes moved in. '76, Plymouth Bay sold to the Noxes, not to be subdivided. '78, sold Lot Number 2 with easement to Passageway. '86, Whitman Board of Appeals granted only a single family be built on 10.2 acres against the judgment of Proustois and of Ababa Kamla. This could happen to the remainder of this treasured woodland. In 1984, the Conservation Committee wrote to PCBG when they heard that they were not going to use the camp anymore. And in '85, Plymouth Bay Girl Scouts turned over to the town, subject to and with all the benefits in the deed from the Caltons. Dispute over the control of land, but Selectmen did say they would abide by the wishes and not develop. That's according to the Patriot Ledger. In our annual report, we have four recreational areas. Hobart's Pond, Harding's Pond, Camp Alice Carlton, and Whitman Town Park. The plan to sell to Sault Shore Parking Lot and up to four fields, this is a residential area, will have a detrimental effect to both communities. Potential chemicals required for green fields will be running down each hill. If they're unable to place a field, what would be the next? We can parse the legal terms regarding wishes. When the deed was written, wishes were on it, and we have a moral obligation to fulfill the wishes to protect this natural habitat for future generations, as was the intentions of the Calvin family. I leave you with Joni Mitchell. They paved paradise and put up a parking lot. Don't it always seem to go? You don't know what you got till it's gone.
Mr. Jewbert, could you please come forward? You need to sign this.
I'm sorry?
All right, further discussion of the proposed amendment to P 9.
My question is, aren't ballfields...
Could you please identify yourself?
Oh, I'm sorry. Frederick Small, 87 Hilltop Road, Whitman. Aren't ballfields considered to be recreational use? Wouldn't that be a nice place for our kids in town to be able to play? I'm just curious, is the difference, so to speak?
For the record, Eric, I was always a fan of Big Yellow Taxi. I'd like to expound a little bit on what's been said, and the property was actually transferred in a number of transfers. The Caltons sold the land to the Girl Scouts. The Girl Scouts then sold the land back to the Caltons. The Caltons then sold the land back to the Girl Scouts. And the Caltons then, the Girl Scouts then sold the land back to the Caltons, but exempted the Cart Path, which is a stretch that goes above what is now Oakdale Farm Road. I want to be clear about this. The recommendation, and I made the recommendation to bring this forward, to consider the sale or lease of the Rockland property. Other than the occasional walker, I'm not aware of any use of that property. However, there are a number of parcels on the Rockland side off Beach Street that have recently sold, one to the town of Rockland for open space, the other to a developer. The town of Rockland just bought, I forget the name of the farm, which would be south of the parcel that we're talking about. About 12 years ago, the town of Rockland began charging us the equivalent of annual taxes for the ownership of the land. The state has a program called Payment in Lieu of Tax, and towns are permitted to assess pilot to neighboring entities that own land in their area. The land does not provide significant service to us, but however, is an excellent opportunity for recreational development. I don't see the town ever having the money to develop the Rockland parcel as recreational land, either with paths or parks or anything else. And I do see us continuing to pay annual assessments for land that we're not using. We didn't seek the people that expressed an interest in this property. They came to us. In fact, it was the third entity that had reached out to the Board of Selectmen with an interest in the property. And the company is Select MA. They operate soccer fields and youth training programs. They're located in Hingham. They have fields in Waymouth, and they're looking to place a field in Rockland. And the land that we have, abutting Beach Street, would be ideal for that purpose. The town would benefit substantially from the sale of the property while still maintaining the acreage that remains in Whitman and would actually enable us to have some funds to be able to develop a recreational path and program on the Whitman acreage. I would suggest that you think about what our obligations are to the town of Rockland for maintaining the land or for developing it, because then it would simply increase in value and our payments would increase. I think the proposal to sell the Rockland piece and maintain the Whitman pieces, keeping in the best interests of the town. Thank you.
Ms. Conley.
Rosemary Conley, 405 Franklin. I do think that it should be noted that private entities are not public recreation, and that was an issue that Rockland had when they they tried the same mechanism with this skating rink. They they said, we're going to use this public land, and we're going to do this skating rink for the public, and it was deemed not to be considered, I believe in the courts, a private recreational. So it is a different mechanism than the wishes of of Mr. Carlton. Additionally, where do we have access to this land? We'd have to drive through two towns to get access to this soccer field. So we're not benefiting really from from that field or that service privately, but we do have access if you go hiking back there. And I don't know if anybody has, but I have. It's quite beautiful, the hills, and it is used. The paths are very well-used back there. And we also have money from the CPA. We're all paying into something right now that that's supposed to make paths and trails and all of these things available to communities. Hanson avails it, and I believe that Rockland is using their CPA money to handle their side, and they've asked to collaborate with us. So there are opportunities for us to widen this scope with money that we've already allocated for these things. So I'd like you to consider possibly, you know, keeping this land and utilizing it the way it was intended to, and also consider what message we we give to people who want to give land when we just sell it off afterwards. I mean, people might want to give to us as a community, and they might think twice if they think it won't be used in a way that they they wanted it to. Thank you.
Ms. Landeville.
I have a question as to why the Finance Committee voted...
Would you please identify yourself?
Cindy Landeville, 20 Harvard Street. I have a question as to why the Finance Committee voted not to recommend this.
Mr. Anderson.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. The position of the Finance Committee is not really related to the amendment, so I would ask that, you know, you take action on the amendment, and when it comes time to go back to the article, if in fact we do, the Finance Committee will then explain its recommendation, because its recommendation is not related to the to the amendment. Does that answer your question?
So we have to vote the amendment in order to go back?
That's right. Sir.
Bob Kimball, Auburnville Way. On the amendment, if I understand it right, it's asking to put this land into conservation land? Did I hear that correctly?
That's correct.
The land is in Rockland, correct? The land is in Rockland, correct? So if it's in Rockland, does the Whitman Town Conservation Commission have jurisdiction over land that is outside the border of Whitman to the Town Council?
Michelle McNulty, Murphy, Lemrean Murphy, in Braintree, Town Council. That is a very good question. I have the same question about the, you do have the ability to own the town. I will have to dig into the statute to see whether the Conservation Commission has any jurisdiction, as opposed to just maintaining the property as it is now, which you have the right to do. I had not seen the amendment prior to when it was read, so that was the first I'd heard of it. I can take a little time while we're waiting and pull things up, if you'd like, and check that out. It's the best I can do right now.
Further discussion of the amendment. Okay, we have a motion and a second to table this amendment, discussion of this amendment, until Town Council's had a chance to review. Well, in favor of tabling Article P nine right now? Say yes.
Yes.
Oppose, no? Okay, the article's tabled, we will come back to that later. Article P ten, to see if the town will vote to appropriate two hundred and six thousand nine hundred and ten dollars from water sewer retained earnings to pay for the engineering costs to begin the process to comply with the Department of Environmental Protection mandated lead and copper rule revisions that require a complete and transparent lead service line inventory of all public water suppliers or take any other action relative thereto. We have a motion, we have a second? All right, discussion of P ten? All right, all in favor of Article P ten, say yes. Oppose, no? Article P ten is adopted unanimously. Article P eleven, to see if the town will vote to appropriate thirty seven thousand dollars in free cash to purchase a power wash system to wash town vehicles and an ABI four Z twenty-three park maintenance and infield grooming tractor with attachments or take any other action relative thereto. Note that the tractor purchase price is thirty three thousand dollars, but five thousand dollars will be paid from recreation revolving funds. We have a motion, a second, a discussion of P eleven. All in favor of P eleven, say yes. Oppose, no? Article P eleven is adopted unanimously. At this point, tonight, the warrant has consideration of a proposed new DPW facility as Article thirty-one. The architect of the proposed project is here tonight and has prepared a brief presentation. If there is no objection, the Chair proposes at this time to proceed to take up Article thirty-one before returning to our regular order of business. Hearing no objection?
Good evening. Good evening. Kevin Clary, thirty-five Indian Trail, Chairman of DPW Building Committee, as well as Chairman of the DPW Board of Commissioners. Tonight, I'd like to introduce Greg Inchenko from Helene Carl Architects. He's going to give a quick presentation on our proposed new building.
Thank you and good evening to everyone. What I will do is just give you some quick overviews of the existing facilities, show you the new proposed facilities, and then obviously you'll be wanting to know what type of impact this will have on your taxes. This is one hundred Essex Street, I'm sure many of you are familiar with it. The circled area is basically where the DPW is currently. Basically, the existing site has multiple facilities. You'll see the operation building down, basically across from the VFF. Then you'll have a fueling station, you see the administration building up there, the existing vehicle storage, assault storage shed, and the dog pound. So you have all the operations in multiple buildings, when it's ideal to actually have them, you know, consolidated so they're more efficient. This is what we're calling the operations building, I'm sure many of you have seen it. The building is over a hundred years old. It is uninsulated, it's just a basing restructure, it has no heating or ventilation, it's not handicapped accessible, and it's basically, you know, structurally beginning to show its wear and tear, as you can see from the exterior. This is just a series of shots of the building, as you can see. You can see a lot of the masonry and everything is beginning to deteriorate. This is what they use for the heating inside the cruise thing. They actually stack wood there and have to feed a wood stove, and you can imagine if they're, you know, working on a snow emergency or something and plowing at night, I don't think it's fair that you'd ask the guys not only to plow the streets, but also stove the stove to keep them warm so they can take a quick break. This is the kitchenette that they use. I show this because this is the only restroom in the facility. It's literally just a toilet, a urinal, and the sink is outside. This is the vehicle storage area that they currently use. This is a typical shop area that they have. This is the stairs that go up to the attic for storage. The reason I show this is, I don't know exactly what year, but the building did suffer fire damage. As you can see, some of the timbers and structures and everything have been charred. The next facility that I show you here is what we call the vehicle storage. This was constructed in the nineteen seventies. Again, it has minimal insulation on the building, no ventilations, it's not handicapped accessible, and the siding in the structure is beginning to deteriorate. This is the back of it, you can see the dents and holes in some of the building. This is typically what the siding looks around the perimeter of the building. And these are some of the door jams and everything, as you can see, are beginning to rot. This is the interior of the vehicle storage. Again, just another shot on the interior. And then this is the vehicle repair bay that the mechanics have to work in to service the vehicles. And Whitman right now has several million dollars' worth of vehicles, trucks, plows, and things like that, that do need to be serviced. And then again, this is the restroom that they get to use. And the reason I show you this, while this is a much nicer restroom than the one in the operations building, is the little stainless steel sink that you see right here is what's considered the emergency eye wash, which is required by code for garages and everything. So the guys have to run out from the garage, find this bathroom washer, and again, it's not the optimum layout. So what we're proposing to do is consolidate all of the facilities into one new building. The salt storage shed will stay, the fuel island will stay, and the dog pound will stay. This is an enlargement of the building plan, and what I've tried to do is color-code it so it's somewhat easier to see. The yellow area down at the bottom is where you'd have administrative offices as well as the crew areas. You can see the locker rooms, the break rooms. The area that's kind of in the shaded blue color, that would be the vehicle repair bays. You'll see up the top bay, which is the very top, I don't know, I haven't got this one there, right there, that would be a wash bay. Those are now required by the DEP and everything, so all the vehicles could be washed safely. The other bays would be used for the vehicle repairs and lifts and everything. And then this portion of the building, right here, would be vehicle storage. What we've tried to do is salvage as much of the building as we could on the existing vehicle storage, which would be the foundations and everything, and then we add a couple extra bays for that. This is just a rendering of, the proposed rendering of what the building will look like. This is again, looking from Essex Street and the fueling station. This is the back of the building. And then this is the, again, kind of the front of the building. Everybody keeps asking what the question is, so I think you'll see that the article's asking for seventeen point eight million dollars, that includes the contingency. On the median home of four hundred and two thousand dollars, the first year would be a twenty-year debt, you know, bond for this. The first year would be two hundred and eighty-five, the twentieth year would be one sixty-three. So then, over the twenty years, the average median house would pay two hundred and twenty-four dollars a year for the new facility. At this point, I will now turn it back over to Kevin.
Article thirty-one, to see if the town will appropriate seventeen million eight hundred thousand dollars to pay costs of designing, constructing, and equipping a new Department of Public Works building, including the payment of all costs incidental related thereto, and that to meet this appropriation, the Treasurer, with the approval of the Selectmen, is authorized to borrow said amount under and pursuant to General Law Chapter forty-four, Section seven-one, or any other enabling authority, and to ensure bonds or notes of the town therefore. Provided, however, that any borrowing pursuant to this vote shall be contingent upon the town's approval of a ballot question to exclude the amounts required to repay any such borrowing from the limits of local property taxes set forth in General Law Chapter fifty-nine, Section twenty-one C, also known as Prop. two and a half. Do I have a motion? And a second? Mr. Clary.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. So this process started in two thousand and eight. A feasibility study was done fifteen years ago that said we needed a new building. So here we are, two thousand and twenty-three, we still need a new building, and I hope you all support it.
Other discussion of Article thirty-one. Ms. Landeville.
I'd like to know what the difference is with a one million ninety-eight eleven we voted last year for shovel-ready architect plans, between the difference of that and the designing of the building that's included in the seventeen eight.
Mr. Clary.
So the money that was appropriated last year allowed us to hire an owner's project manager, which is required by Mass. General Law. It allowed us to hire Greg and his team, that we are in the process of finalizing our design to a hundred percent. So the seventeen point eight that we're asking for is for construction and contingency of that construction.
Other discussion of Article thirty-one.
Bob Kimball, Auburnville Way. When is anticipated the two and a half override? Is that the next election, or is it going to be a future election?
So it would be at the May twentieth election. I guess it's a debt exclusion vote.
So it's a two and a half override?
I guess clarification, I'm going to ask—
Proposition two and a half gives you two options for raising money beyond the levy limit. The first option, which is a simple override, permanently increases your levy limit to whatever's voted, that taxes forever. A debt exclusion only allows you to exclude the amount of money that's necessary to pay the debt. So that money that you're authorizing, typically because it's a declining principal loan, goes down each year until the debt is expired. Very similar to what we've done with the high school, which will be done in, I think, three years? Three years.
Other discussion of thirty-one. Sir.
Chris Griffin, three sixty-three School Street. As Mr. Clary pointed out, this has been dragging since I think you said oh eight. And I, for one, am fortunate enough to, my commute to work now comes down Park Ave and then Essex Street, and I get to see the park and the work they did, and the boulevard by Hobart's, every day, and I'm reminded, you know, the work they've done, particularly over the last decade or so, to really, really improve our community. These guys have been patient, very, very patient, and they deserve what they're asking for.
Further discussion of thirty-one. Is there anybody else besides Ms. Landeville who's already asked a question? No, okay, go ahead.
In the event this does not pass, that thirty seven thousand that we just passed for the power wash system, what happens to that? As well as, is the new building, doesn't that include this power wash?
Mr. Clary.
So any new equipment, like that power wash, and there is some recent equipment that we've purchased in the last couple of years, will be taken to the new facility? So that power wash system would come to the new facility?
So it's not included in the new facility?
Excuse me, I didn't hear what you said.
It's not included in the new facility?
No, the power wash is something we need now, so that's why it's a separate question.
So according to the plan, though, there is an area for the car wash, the truck wash?
So part of, what we don't have at the current facility is a enclosed area, when we do wash the trucks, to collect all the water and to bring it into a proper filtering system. So as part of the new building, we're building that structure that we can bring the trucks in, collect that water, filter it appropriately to the DEP standards. So that's what we're adding to the building.
Other discussion of Article thirty-one. Yes, sir.
Garrett Monas, twenty Fox Hill Run. I had the opportunity to tour the facility at the open house that they had a few weeks ago, and maybe just to answer the question around the wash. I believe they explained that the, right now, when the trucks go out for salt, they have to be cleaned in order for the salt not to deteriorate the trucks. It sounds like right now, the DPW employees have to use ladders and hoses in cold temperatures in order to clean those trucks. It sounds like this wash bay, you know, power washer is something small, this wash bay would actually allow them to safely and quickly clean these trucks after they come back, if that's correct.
That is correct, okay, all right.
And I, other things that I saw, just real quickly on that tour, the vehicle storage building, where we have all of our vehicles stored, it was a day similar to yesterday, it was like sixty, fifty degrees, rainy, there were puddles all over the floor where the cars are, or where all the vehicles are currently stored. He showed the picture, the architect showed the picture of the wood stove. I mean, that room is about the size of my kitchen, they have to heat it with a wood stove, and these guys, you know, I was talking to that employee, I can't remember his name, they're working thirty-six hours, they're taking two or three-hour breaks, and they have to do that in that really small, small room. So I agree with the gentleman before, I think it's time that we do something to help these guys out, so thank you.
Other discussion of thirty-one. Seeing none, all in favor of Article thirty-one, say yes.
Yes.
Oppose, no? Article thirty-one passes unanimously. Article two, to determine how much money the town will raise and appropriate for general government protection in persons and property, health and sanitation, public works, veterans' benefits, education, library, recreation unclassified, specifying what appropriation shall be taken from the receipt of a department or take any action relative thereto. Do I have a motion? And a second? All right. What we're going to do here is I'm going to call out these budget line items, I believe we have thirty-five of them. I'll call them out in ten-line increments, and if you have a question on any particular line item, please shout question and the number, and we will exempt those from a general vote of the budget and come back to them and address them individually. Lines one through ten. Seven, eight, and nine. Any others on one to ten? All right? Eleven to twenty. Eighteen and nineteen. Step to the microphone, please, Mr. Chairman.
Randy Armatina, sixth Riverbert Circle, Board of Selectmen. If you notice, after twenty-nine, historical commission, that would be considered thirty, it just doesn't have a number.
Okay, so the line item says historical commission, there's no number next to it, that is number thirty. All right? So again, twenty to twenty-nine, any further? Okay, hearing none. So the question lines I have here are seven, eight, nine, eighteen, nineteen, twenty-two, and twenty-five. Any others? All right, then, we will exempt those line items for now, and we will vote the remainder of Article 2 as a package. And the number we're voting is the Finance Committee recommendation. All in favor of adopting Article 2 as discussed, say yes.
Yes!
Opposed, no? Okay, that portion of Article 2 is adopted. Okay. Discussion of line 7. Yes, ma'am.
Michelle Winnett, 308 Rayner Ave. My question is the same for all of these numbers. Why is the recommended request from the department increased over the recommended by the Selectmen and Finance Committee? It's not a lot of money, but I just want to know why.
Can somebody answer that question?
Why is the recommended amount more than the department request on those line items?
And we could go through line by line, but basically, the Treasurer Collector's Office, those are all salary lines which have been verified by the Accountant's Office. And they're actual to their, whether or not they have step raises. So these are exact figures. Where Department Head may have submitted a salary that just is a 2.5%, the actual calculation is done right out to the exact schedule of the year.
Yep.
Other discussion of line 7. Okay, line 8. Discussion of line 8. We should vote 7, you're right. Let's vote 7. Okay, all in favor of adopting the Finance Committee's recommendation on line 7, say yes. Opposed, no? Line 7 is adopted unanimously. Line 8, discussion of line 8. Yes, sir.
Marshall Lotina, 100 Hazel Street. I did see the breakdown for the technology salaries, that that's funding, as far as I'm concerned, as far as I saw, is two positions, and one of them is increasing about a 50% pay raise. I just wanted to question the reasoning behind the 50% pay raise.
All right. We have someone who can address that? Mr. McNeil.
Josh McNeil, Captain Allenway, also the IT Director for the Town of Whitman. For those of you that were here last year at Town meeting, I appreciate your support in creating the new position. I'm not sure how many of you that have worked, I've worked with a lot of different members here over the past 10, 11 years, previously working for the school district for the 16 years that I did. So I've been vested in Whitman for 27 years, or almost 30 years now. And I know a lot has changed when it comes to technology. I think we can all understand and see that, you know, in relation to different positions and different salary scales. I'm not going to tell you something that many of you don't know. It's been very difficult to try and hire and retain employees across the board, not just in technology, but everywhere. We did have an interview committee that we had set up last year to try and hire this position that was created at $65,000. And initially, I was, you know, we were going back and forth and trying to work within our, you know, with money that we had available. And, you know, the Finance Committee supported the 65 and mentioned that, you know, 65 is low. And I, again, as a taxpayer myself, the last thing I want to do is increase taxes and pay more money. So, you know, and what we did in try to find the appropriate candidate is we interviewed five, or we tried to interview five candidates that applied. We had a, you know, probably 15 or so that did apply for the position. The first candidate, no call, no show on the interview day. The second candidate came back and said, unfortunately, the salary is too low for me. The third candidate was, you know, basically a rock star and had every, you know, possible, you know, experience that we needed, from municipal experience to networking to systems. And I tried to explain this to the Finance Committee. You know, it certainly was, you know, a great environment for us working together and trying to understand what it is that we need for a person, you know, to fill this position. And again, I'm not going to spend, I could spend an hour sitting here talking about this, but at the end of the day, what we're trying to do is we're trying to find a jack of an all-trades type of position, where we don't just have, you know, systems administration experience, we have network administration, we have, you know, desktop administration. And it's nearly impossible to try and bring someone in at $65,000 today when you try, I mean, I can bring a network administrator or a systems administrator in, but that's really not going to help me, because we need to encompass all areas. And I think the big difference between public sector and private sector is that in the private sector, you know, they have specialties. They have a network administrator or a systems administrator. I mean, these companies have 24 people doing what myself has been doing for 10 years. And I don't know how, honestly, I was able to get through the pandemic. But at the end of the day, what I'm trying to do here is trying to convince folks here that, you know, in order to hire the appropriate people and retain them, we need to pay the money. And unfortunately, you know, many folks might look at it and say, you know, why do people want to come to the public sector? We don't want to come to the public sector for money. I can tell you that right now. You know, I'd be making $190,000 or $250,000 out in the private sector. But, you know, I personally, myself, as many of you know, I'm vested here. I want to do better. I want to, you know, help the public, and I enjoy doing what I do. So at the end of the day, you know, what we're trying to do is, again, we're trying to hire and retain, and it just doesn't go for technology. I mean, we can look around. We increased the town administrator's salary to get a qualified town administrator. So again, this is not something new. It's just a matter of, you know, again, highlighting what we need to do moving forward. I mean, I was just at a technology conference last week, the first time that I was able to get out of the office and actually, you know, start attending some of these things. And after the keynote speaker, what was the first topic? Staffing. How do you hire and retain people? I mean, I'm getting calls all the time from different IT Directors. We can't find people, because either A, we're not offering enough, or B, they find a better opportunity, they're making more money. So we've hired, we've trained them, and then they go take off. And fortunately, now we have to find someone else, and we have to, again, train them and spend more money. So we're spinning the wheels here, unfortunately. I mean, I'm more than happy to answer specific questions and provide more details and explanation. But again, I could be here for a couple hours going through, you know, some of the really deep details.
Mr. Anderson.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. So in respect to your question, just a follow-up from Mr. McNeil. The Finance Committee did question 57 individual lines on the budget worksheet that you find at the end of this budget. And there was significant debate regarding salary lines. So I think the challenge in the final analysis is generally, it is generally recognized that we're competing for the most competent employees and really have to balance an exceedingly unsustainable salary range for retention. So it really is a fine balance. And just to let you know, for this particular salary line, the Finance Committee did vote unanimously to support. But just one more thing, just regarding salaries, and I'm glad the question was brought up. But the FinCom recognizes that it's completely in the purview of the Board of Selectmen to negotiate contracts with specific individuals and for all collective bargaining units in this town. So, you know, it really is important that the town recognizes that it is the final decision on these contracts, the individually and collectively bargained. But at the end of the day, as Mr. McNeil eloquently stated, we need to retain the best qualified people if we're going to get the work done that we need to get done. Thank you.
Other discussion of line item 8. All right, then, all in favor of adopting the Finance Committee recommendation on line item 8, say yes.
Yes!
Opposed, no? Line item 8 is adopted unanimously. Line item 9, we had a question on that. Sure.
Dawn Riley, 135 Washington Street, and Town Clerk. I just want to let you know that the $7,500 for my expense line for the Town Clerk's Office reflects $3,950 for my expenses. 950 of that goes to paying for dog tags and things like that, and 2,500 goes for records restoration. I have been in the office for over 20 years, and the expense line is 3, has been $3,000 for 20 years, and prior to me for another 15 years. So for 35 years, the expense line for my office has been $3,000. So with me asking for the $7,500, that is an honest requirement for my office. However, I feel that with the town being in need of money in other places being more important, we'll just have to scrimp and scrape and buy our own products if we need them. So I just, I go along with the 6,450 from the Finance Committee. Thank you.
Other discussion of line 9. All right, all in favor of line 9, according to the Finance Committee's recommendation, say yes. Opposed, no? Line item 9 is adopted unanimously. Line item 18. We had a question on 18. Did anybody have a question on 18? All right, then, all in favor of adopting the Finance Committee's recommendation on line 18, say yes.
Yes!
Opposed, no? Line 18 is adopted unanimously. Line 19. We had a question on 19? All right, all in favor of the Finance Committee's recommendation on line 19, say yes.
Yes!
Opposed, no? Line 19 is adopted unanimously. Line 22. We have a question on 22. All right, all in favor of the Finance Committee's recommendation on line 22, say yes.
Yes!
Opposed, no? Line 22 is adopted unanimously. Line 25, question on 25. All right, all in favor of adopting the Finance Committee's recommendation on line 25, say yes.
Yes!
Opposed, no? Line 25 is adopted unanimously. And that's Article 2. Article, I'm sorry. Article 12, "Vote to expand the South Shore. To see if the town will vote to approve the amended South Shore Regional Vocational School District regional agreement, which is on file in Town Clerk's Office, or take any other action relative thereto." We have a motion, a second. Discussion of Article 12. All right, all in favor of Article 12, say yes.
Yes!
Opposed, no? Article 12 is adopted unanimously. Article 13, "To see if the town will vote to authorize spending limits." Excuse me. We have a motion to take P9 off the table. Do we have a second on that? Okay, all in favor of taking P9 off the table, say yes.
Yes!
Opposed, no? Okay, P9 is back in front of us. Remember, we are discussing the amendment to P9, the proposed amendment.
Thank you again. I want to thank the meeting for its indulgence while I looked at a few things. I think in the quick looking at the statutes under Chapter 40, Section 8(c), it may be problematic for the Conservation Commission to have jurisdiction of a land that is located outside the borders of the town. Now, again, this is in my quick, you know, 20-minute review of the statutes. As to the use of the community preservation funds, I would need much longer to look into that, about using those monies, again, to maintain property that is located outside of the town. But one thing I wanted to mention, when I took a step back to give consideration to this amendment, there's two parts of this article. The first part is to accept the land, because we needed that done as a formality. The second part of this article is what to do with the land. And as it is proposed, it's to dispose of it, whether by sale or rental or lease. If it is the desire of the meeting, which I think is where this amendment was going, not to dispose of the land, you could simply act on the first part A and not the second part B. Then the land remains in the control of the town, and you can wait to a later point in time when we could more fully research exactly whether you can use the CPA funds, whether this should be maintained as it currently is, under the authority of, I believe, the Board, or whether we do something else with it. But you may not have to decide the issue of making it conservation land tonight in order to simply retain it. So I wanted to make that distinction to see if that might help you as you're pondering all of this. Thank you.
Thank you. Discussion, further discussion of the proposed amendment to P9. Ms. Connolly.
Rosemary Connolly, 405 Franklin. It was just said that it's under the control of the Board of Selectmen. Could you explain how that it is under the Board? In which way do we own this property, and how is it under that control? Because it's my understanding there's no mechanism for Selectmen without some sort of agreement from the town for the Selectmen to take control of the property. So if you could just explain how it is under their control.
Well, the land is currently owned by the town. The Board of Selectmen, unless the land has gone to the Conservation Commission or to the Rec Board as a park, you know, they're kind of the entity that speaks for the town. I'm not saying that they're going to go make a decision on it. I'm just, all I'm trying to outline for you is currently, the land has been deeded to the town. We need the formal action in A to accept that deed, because that just was never done. The land is then the town's. You can decide at a later point if you want to move it somewhere, but right now, I don't believe the Conservation Commission has the authority under Chapter 40, Section 8(c) to take control of the land. That was the specific question that was put to me when we started on this. So this is a much bigger, again, the amendment was just brought up on the floor. It wasn't given to my office ahead of time to look at. So this is a much thornier issue if you want to start to assign this land to a specific entity to have control over it. Right now, I think the question is whether you're going to keep it or you're going to dispose of it. That's the article, really, that was before the town.
Mr. Anderson.
Gloria Knox, 149 Washington.
Mr. Anderson has the floor, ma'am. Hang on, you're next.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. So again, I wasn't going to speak prior to the amendment, but I think at this point, it probably would help if the position of the Finance Committee was made available. So just for a little bit of past history, this article came before the Finance Committee initially as a reserve fund request in early February. At that time, it was learned that there were some questionable parcel transfers, and you heard all about that. And the Finance Committee had concerns about how deed restrictions could impact the intended use. The major concern is, or was, that the town could be exposed to a future litigation that could have an economic element. It was suggested at this time that a title search could be useful. The Board was split, but also approved the reserve fund expenditure to complete the survey of the land. When the article was detailed in several subsequent meetings of this committee, the Board felt that it did not have sufficient backup to ensure the town actually owned the land and that the restrictions on the deed were being honored. The main concern being that the town would have a financial exposure. During the discussion between the Finance Committee and the Town Administrator, the Board at that time suggested that the article could be split into two parts, as there was support for the Town meeting accepting the land, but the disposition aspect did not include all options to position the town the most benefit. Ultimately, the article remained as drafted. So in conclusion, we have concerns about the economic repercussions by accepting this article in its current form. We have not been provided the results of the survey and other titles, and feel strongly that there should be more due diligence to any, prior to any sale of this property. So that's the position of the Finance Committee, the majority position. Thank you.
Ma'am.
Gloria Knox, 149 Washington Street, Whitman, Massachusetts. I know lots about that land, for I lived at Oakdale Farm for 25 years. And Camp Ellis Cowton was very near and dear to my heart, and a lot of scouts in this area. The land was given to Plymouth Bay, by Plymouth Bay Girl Scout Council, by Dr. Cowton and his wife. And it was put in a very firm and positive way that it was left to the Town of Whitman if the Girl Scouts did not want to use the land anymore. And when that time came, it was turned over to the Town of Whitman to be used as a recreational land, that is, I'm sure, in the deed. And it is very important that we handle things correctly. And it is very important that we handle things correctly, because that was a big gift to the town of Whitman. And even though some of that land's in Rockland, it still belongs to the town of Whitman. Don't give it away. Don't be foolish. And you know, it was used for many, many, many years. When I was a young girl, I went there. Many people went to Camp Alice Carlton, Boy Scouts, Girl Scouts, recreational people. And about five years ago, my daughter and my son-in-law tried and asked the town if they could develop the land and make some riding trails through there, and it was turned down. So therefore, I can tell you some more stories, but I won't go on. But if you would like more information, I'd be delighted to talk with you. God bless you.
Mr. Lotina.
Marshall Lotina, 100 Laisel Street. Sorry, a little close there. So this might be slightly out of order, as we're still debating the amendment, but as Town Council said, this is really two separate issues here. I'd like to make a motion to have us consider just Part A and strike Part B until a later meeting.
We need to address the issue of the amendment first before we can do anything else. Mr. Small.
Seeing that there is some convoluted items here, and based upon Town Council's recommendation, I would ask town meeting to not vote this amendment, say no, and I am prepared to submit an amendment that we only consider Part A, which would be taking control of the land until such time that we can figure out, or the Board of Selectmen can figure out, to a greater way, the use and disposition of the properties. Hope you can support me. Thank you.
Further discussion of the amendment. All right, we have, all in favor of adopting the proposed amendment to P-9, say yes. Oppose, no.
No.
The amendment is not adopted. Discussion of P-9. Mr. Small.
I'd like to make a motion to amend P-9, to read only the portion of A, to see if the town will vote to accept a parcel of land located in Rockland, Massachusetts, and another parcel located in Whitman, Massachusetts, known as Camp Alice Carlton, conveyed to the town in a deed dated April 3, 1985, and recorded with the Plymouth County Registry of Deeds Book 6067, page 119. And that would be it.
So the proposed amendment to P-9 is to read A to see if the town will vote to accept a parcel of land located in Rockland, Massachusetts, and another parcel located in Whitman, Massachusetts, known as Camp Alice Carlton, conveyed to the town in a deed dated April 3, 1985, and recorded with the Plymouth County Register of Deeds Book 6067, page 119. We have a motion and a second. Discussion of the proposed amendment. Yes, ma'am.
It's a two-part question. I'm asking for some clarification regarding a need to vote to accept something that has been deeded to the town. It may just be legal clarification, but if we're already paying annually on upkeep, it seems that there's some implicit acceptance of ownership of this land, so just looking for some clarity around all of this.
Ms. McNulty.
Thank you. The town meeting is the body that is authorized to accept the gift of land, so it is a kind of a legality that we just need the vote to accept it. It's a formality.
Sir.
Jerry Blumenthal, 50 Elm Place. I have a two-part question. How many acres, or what is the size of the parcel in Rockland? Secondly, how much money is Town of Rockland charging in taxes or fees to the Town of Whitman for that parcel?
Mr. Lyman.
There are approximately 27 acres in Rockland, and there are approximately eight acres in Whitman.
Other discussion of the proposed amendment. Mr. Anderson.
Yes, the second part of the question is found in the budget worksheet. Under the selectmen budget, it's called pilot, payment in lieu of taxes, and currently, we're budgeted for $6,000, and that's what we pay annually. Well, we budgeted $6,000, but I think it's $5,400.
We don't know.
Yeah. So that's how much we budget for this line item, $6,000 a year.
Other discussion of the amendment to P-9, the proposed amendment.
Mr. Martin.
Yes. Mr. Lyman.
To date, we have paid $97,000 to the Town of Rockland for the privilege of owning the land.
Other discussion of the amendment. Mr. Jubert. Please come to the microphone so we can hear you.
I'm out of my glasses.
Okay.
$57,000.
Thank you, thank you very much. And as far as the tax bill goes, we could sit down and have a discussion about co-owning with Rockland, which would, we could transfer title with the stipulation that it remain part of the Camp Alice, the Alice Carlton Park. And Rockland Green People, I've had a discussion with them, and they're more than willing to see if we can make that work. So that would eliminate the tax burden for the Town of Whitman while still maintaining the ability to utilize the woods, as was intended by the Carlton family.
Anything can be discussed. I would point out that the adjacent property, which Rockland just purchased last year, which is similar, was purchased for $800,000. And I had suggested to Rockland, if they were interested, they might wish to make that offer, but they weren't interested in making that offer.
To purchase, yes. Everybody understands that, but we could work collaboratively and try and mark that out, so that there would not be a tax burden to the taxpayers of the Town of Whitman, but would still be able to utilize the woods. Perhaps.
Other discussion of the proposed amendment to P-9. Yes, ma'am. There's nobody else.
Elizabeth Dagno, 316 School Street. As a follow-up to my prior question, and in regards to the gentleman's comment about collaborating with the Town of Rockland, with the removal of P-9B, is there a point in voting on P-9A for this land that's been in our possession since '85? Was P-9B the impetus for P-9A in the first place? Still unclear on why we're voting on this article in 2023.
Mr. Lyman.
The reason we are voting for this article is we did not do what we are required to do when property is given to the town. There is a protection mechanism in the general laws that says you can't simply give land to the town. They have to accept it. Otherwise, if you want to get rid of a piece of property, just deed it to the town. So the process includes someone donating the land to the town, and then a town meeting voting to accept that gift of land. The title is defective because we haven't yet accepted it. The land is still registered non-name, but we have to complete the process.
Right, other discussion of the proposed amendment to P-9. Mr. Jubert.
Because in 1986, there appeared to have been some discussion and confusion about how the property was to be handled. I wasn't there then, and I don't know if anyone else here was involved back then. However, the town failed to do what it was supposed to do, and when I reviewed the property, including the town's acceptance, I discovered that we, in fact, had not accepted it, and recognized that that's something we have to do.
Other discussion of the proposed amendment to P-9. All right, all in favor of amending Article P-9 to essentially remove Section B, say yes.
Yes.
Oppose, no. Okay, Article P-9 is amended. Discussion of the amended article. All right, seeing none, all in favor of adopting Article P-9 as amended, say yes.
Yes.
Oppose, no. Article P-9 is adopted unanimously. Okay, where were we now? Article 13. "To see if the town will vote to authorize spending limits for fiscal year 2024 for the following revolving accounts approved under the town's bylaws, or take any other action relative thereto. Animal control, $25,000. Counsel on aging, $10,000. Library fines and fees, $20,000. Planning board, $75,000. Police, $20,000. Recreation, $75,000. Street lighting receipts, $15,000." We have a motion. Motion made in second to discussion of Article 13. All in favor of adopting Article 13, say yes.
Yes.
Oppose, no. Article 13 is adopted unanimously. Article 14, "To see if the town will vote to appropriate $40,000 from free cash to pay for costs of repairs and improvements to the fire station, or take any other action relative thereto." Moved in second to discussion. Chief.
Good evening. Tim Clancy, 21 Bloss Road, Fire Chief. This article was put forth to make improvements to the central fire station. The article was presented to the Capitol Committee, who did approve it. There was some confusion at one point whether they had or not. Talking with them, they said they had approved it. I think Chairman Essens here as well tonight. Just a little history, the main structure of the fire station is 122 years old. It was built in 1901. We had a renovation with addition 22 years ago in 2001. The building has served the town for over 122 years. The goal of the repairs and improvements is to extend the life of this building. We've been at it a long time. So I have been actively working with the facilities manager to identify problems and prioritize them. The prioritization of this has changed up until two weeks ago. Right now, we realize we need to reseal some windows. The renovation, they sealed the windows, the caulking is shrinking, we're starting to get water in through those windows. We just found within the last few weeks, around the main door on the left front side of the building, the mortar has fallen out from between a lot of the bricks. We need to get that evaluated and looked at. The gutters are leaking, which has resulted in damage to the side entrance ceiling. We looked at it today. The facilities manager, Todd Decoudo, is with me. It appears it's also sagging at this time. We also need to address a water issue in the basement. We have regular flooding. Some of the stuff that we're looking to improve is, if you look at the central fire station, there's a sign, it says Central Fire Station. Within recent time, the R and fire fell off. The T is broken and the I is cracked. There's a plaque on it. I need to work with the Historical Commission, as there's a plaque on the building that says 1901. I believe that'll have to be restored to what it once was. Also, we're looking at repairing some of the floors in the emergency operations center on the second floor, as long as the living quarters, they're stained, they're damaged. During a major event, the EOC is in full operation for storms, blizzards, hurricanes, whatever we may be doing. We have a lot of personnel in there, and in retrospect, carpet was probably not the best decision for that room. We're also looking to do some other maintenance stuff as far as painting, replacing some ceiling tiles. We have a significant amount of ceiling tiles in that building that are stained from water damage from previous leaks. We're going to continue with some of the other ongoing problems. If the money is approved, I'll continue to work with the facilities manager, and we'll follow the purchasing procurement procedures as also, but please be advised, we are working on a long-term capital plan for this building. We need to come up with a plan for this building before it disintegrates around us. The plan will be brought forth, you, once it's completed. We're working diligently on that, and I would thank you for your time, and I would appreciate your support. Thank you.
Other discussion of Article 14. Mr. Anderson.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As I mentioned in my opening statements, this is, you know, a consensus document. There were numerous discussions between the Fire Chief, myself, the Board, the Town Administrator. There were numerous discussions on this article, and it was discussed specifically when we met with the Capitol Committee Chairman at our meeting. And it was very much a point that the reason that the Finance Committee voted 1-7 with one abstention not to support this article is because there was not a vote of the Capitol Committee for this article. There is a Capitol article within this warrant, which would have been the best place for this particular article, but there is no doubt in my mind, and in the minds of the Finance Committee, that maintenance needs to be done. Capital improvements need to be made. I did serve for 25 years on the former Capital Improvement Advisory Committee, and I'm encouraged by the level of exuberance for making capital repairs. It really is something that is critically important to the maintenance of this town. But like I said, the Finance Committee's vote was based on the fact that the, that there was no recommendation from the Capitol Committee, and there was no backup provided to the Finance Committee as it made its recommendations on this article. Thank you.
Further discussion of Article 14. Yes, Ms. Landerville.
Will the Building Department Building Inspector be involved in any of this?
Chief.
Yes, ma'am. Anything that will be done that needs to be permitted, we'll be permitting that falls along that.
Other discussion of 14. All right, all in favor of adopting Article 14, say yes.
Yes.
Oppose, no. Article 14 is adopted unanimously. "To see if the town will vote to appropriate $89,872 from water sewer retained earnings to purchase and equip a two-door, full-size utility body pickup work truck, or take any other action relative thereto." We have a motion, a second. Discussion of 15. All in favor of adopting Article 15, say yes.
Yes.
Oppose, no. Article 15 is adopted unanimously. Article 16, "To see if the town will vote to appropriate $7,500 from water sewer retained earnings to prepare and submit a project evaluation PDF application to MassDepsRF with supporting water quality and engineering information, or take any other action relative thereto." We have a motion, a second. Discussion of 16. All in favor of Article 16, say yes.
Yes.
Oppose, no. Article 16 is adopted unanimously. Article 17, "To see if the town will vote to amend the general and zoning bylaws of the Town of Whitman, with gender-neutral wording specifically deleting the words Board of Selectmen, and inserting in its place the words Select Board, wherever those words appear, and in the case of a single reference to select man, Select Board member, or take any other action relative thereto." We have a motion to pass over Article 17. Second, Mr. Evans.
Justin Evans, 57 Candlewick Lane, Board of Selectmen. I submitted this article to the Board, so I do support it. However, we are amending the zoning bylaws for the Town of Whitman. That requires a planning board hearing, so if this were to pass without having the planning board hearing, the Attorney General's Office would reject this article. So please pass over. We'll try to bring it back for the November special.
Other discussion. All in favor of passing over Article 17, say yes.
Yes.
Oppose, no. Article 17 is passed over. Article 18, "To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate $8,000 from free cash to engage in an actuary to perform an assessment of the future liabilities of OPEB, other post-employment benefits as required by GASB 45/75, Government Account Standards Bureau, or take any other action relative thereto." We have a motion, a second. Discussion of 18. All in favor of Article 18, say yes.
Yes.
Oppose, no. Article 18 is adopted unanimously. Article 19, "To see if the town will vote to appropriate $20,000 from free cash to pay for costs associated with engaging a financial consultant to develop a financial trend and forecasting model to be used to provide financial information to the town on an annual basis, or take any other action relative thereto." We have a motion, a second. Mr. Kane.
Just quickly, Sean Kane, 31 Forest Street, member of the Board of Selectmen. Just quickly, this is directly connected to the strategic plan, the financial aspect of the strategic plan. I think if done properly, it'll provide us with critical information, you know, intelligent information that we can make as far as moving forward and taking care of our finances strategically. So I urge you to support this. Thank you.
Other discussion of the article. Mr. Lotina.
Marshall Lotina, 100 Laisel Street. Just a question, is this the 20,000 annually? Is this in perpetuity? Is this a one-time thing? Is this something that we can build into a future line? I have an Article 2, Sean, or, sorry.
Mr. Kane.
No, this is just for this year. The report is meant to report back annually.
Other discussion of 19. All in favor of Article 19, say yes.
Yes.
Oppose, no. Article 19 is adopted unanimously. Article 20, "To see if the town will vote to appropriate $54,000 from water sewer retained earnings to engage an engineering firm, environmental partners for professional engineering services for the Auburn Street and South Ave, aka Commercial Street pump stations, or take any other action relative thereto." We have a motion, a second. All in favor of Article 20, say yes.
Yes.
Oppose, no. Article 20 is adopted unanimously. Article 21, "To see if the town will vote to authorize the Board of Selectmen on terms and conditions they determine to be most beneficial to the town to enter into municipal choice agreement, municipal choice aggregation program as per Massachusetts General Law 164, Section 134, and contract General Law 164, Section 134, and contract for electrical supply for Whitman residents and/or businesses, and to execute and enter into any and all documents necessary to effectuate the same or take any other action relative thereto. Motion in a second. Discussion. Mr. Evans.
Thank you. Justin Evans, 57 Candlewick Lane, Selectmen. I also proposed this article. So, if this passes, the Board of Selectmen will be authorized to reach out to a consultant to develop a municipal aggregation plan. The shortest explanation I can give right now is that the, if you look at your electric bill, there are two general charges, there's distribution, that will be National Grid, they own our lines, it will always be National Grid, and there's the supply portion. Currently, the, well, until yesterday, the basic supply rate for National Grid was 33 cents a kilowatt hour, give or take. That's the basic, if you took no action, that's what you were paying for electric supply. The town of Whitman municipal buildings had sought a competitive electric supplier, we were paying about 10 and a half cents per kilowatt hour, significant savings. If this is successful, the town is able to aggregate all of the customers who do not choose to opt out of our aggregation and bulk purchase electricity on behalf of the residents. Towns that I've spoken to have saved a significant amount of money, I think it's averaged about $78 a year, but the last six months, it's been about, you know, $80 a month because the electric rates have been significantly higher. If this passes, the board will reach out to a couple of consultants, there are really only three in the state, so we'll probably contact all three, pick which one is going to develop the plan, work through with DEP to, or with whichever state agency it has to, the Department of Energy Resources, to develop the plan, then get submitted to the Department of Public Utilities for approval before it goes sometime around there, it'll come back to town meeting for final approval here. There'll be public hearings before the plan's adopted, and there's always the opportunity for residents to opt out, so you can always opt out, choose National Grid as your supplier, or source your own competitive electric supplier. If you've got friends in Situate and Marshfield, they just recently adopted this, they all got mailers probably two months ago, that said if you do nothing, you'll be moved to our municipal aggregator, you can opt out, you can choose your own supplier, so. I'll stick around, is there any other questions?
Other discussion of twenty-one, Mr. Small.
Fred Small, 87 Hilltop Road. Couple quick questions. Number one, obviously it won't prohibit us from going to our own suppliers, how does that affect any solar electricity and any solar rebates, the smart incentive, et cetera, that people are currently receiving if you put in solar prior? Number one, and number two, can you bounce back and forth depending upon what time of year it is with the municipal as opposed to a private?
Mr. Evans?
So I'll take the second part first. You can bounce back and forth, as with any competitive supplier, you know, I source my own electricity from a competitive supplier, I check every six months or so, make sure I'm still getting the best price. That's not for everyone, I'm an energy systems engineer, it's, you know, that's why I proposed this article. The, for the first part, the way this is written, each plan is going to vary, but everyone that I've looked at has allowed solar rebates, smart rebates, and it would be my intention to keep that in the plan.
Other discussion of twenty-one. All in favor of adopting Article twenty-one, say yes.
Yes.
Oppose, no. Article twenty-one is adopted unanimously. Article twenty-two, to see if the town will vote to appropriate $100,000 from free cash for the repair replacement of existing sidewalks and/or for the cost of materials or engineering services as needed to complete search work or take any other action relative thereto. We have a motion in second. Discussion of twenty-two. All in favor of Article twenty-two, say yes.
Yes.
Oppose, no. Article twenty-two is adopted unanimously. Article twenty-three, to see if the town will vote to appropriate $200,000 from free cash to pay for engineering costs associated with seeking State Transportation Improvement Program funds or take any other action relative thereto. We have a motion in second. Discussion of twenty-three. Yes, Mr. Galvin.
John Galvin, 41 High Street. I was present at the Board of Selectmen meeting when this proposal was given to the board. It's an amazing opportunity for the town to have the entire South Ave redone, pretty much on the state's dime or this TIPS group. However, I do have a question on what this 200,000 will be used for, because it was my understanding that the total project would be about $10 million, and that the town was going to be responsible for the design aspect of it, and at that meeting, we were told that would be about 14%. So my math is pretty good on that one, that's about $1.4 million. This is only 200,000, so what is this being used for, and how will the remaining approximately 1.2 that the town would be responsible for to move forward with this project? And I know Bruce has my answer.
Mr. Martin.
Good evening, Bruce Martin, 54 Park Ave, also the Superintendent of Highway Division, DPW. So this is a great project, like Mr. Galvin said. We plan on paying out the engineering service incrementally. These, these projects take five to eight years to go from the planning stages actually to actually starting construction, so we can pay for the engineering services incrementally. So this will get us to 25% pre-engineered plans that will be submitted to the state. I talked to the engineers today, we had a meeting about this. The project is looking more like a $14 million project, so we've already invested a lot of time in, into this and some town funds just to get rolling. There is a map out there, gives a little bit of an idea what this project entails, but it would start on South Ave, around Dyer Ave, and head all the way up to the top of Plymouth Street. Reconstruction intersections, drainage, new sidewalks, all down by the Regapark School, where there's sidewalks with no curbing in the school zone. Reconfiguring the Franklin and South Ave intersection to make it more friendly for everybody going the commuter rail to the high school, the intersection of Rainor Ave. It's still planning stages, there'll be all kinds of citizens meetings where we can have people come in and give feedback on any ideas we come up with, because it's, it's still, you know, a process that we're going to go through.
Other discussion of twenty-three. All right, all in favor of Article twenty-three, say yes.
Yes.
Oppose, no. Article twenty-three is adopted unanimously. Article twenty-four, to see if the town will vote to appropriate $314,801 and 65 cents in available Chapter 90 funds, such funds to be expended by the Department of Public Works in accordance with the guidance and requirements of the Massachusetts Highway Department, or take any other action relative thereto. A motion in second. Discussion of twenty-four. Ms. Landeville.
Yeah, this question is for Bruce. As far as this 314,000, any chances that's going to fix Glen Street or Whitman Ave with the drainage?
Mr. Martin.
So this is the yearly amount that the state gives us for road repairs. This year, we plan on repaving Rock Street, a portion of Washington Street from Chestnut to Park Ave, Warren Ave and Star Street. I agree Glen Street is high on the list, Whitman Ave is also high on the list, there's a lot of roads, we did a windshield survey several years ago where we ranked roads fair, good, poor, and, you know, we have a lot of work to do, and we will spend the money that we get every year on the roads and do the best we can, the funds we have.
Other discussion of twenty-four. All in favor of Article twenty-four, say yes.
Yes.
Oppose, no. Article twenty-four is adopted unanimously. Article twenty-five, to see if the town will vote to transfer $129,000 in free cash to purchase technology equipment, to upgrade the town's card access and telephone systems, and to install interior cameras in the police station or take, take any other action relative thereto. We have a motion in second. Discussion of twenty-five. All in favor of Article twenty-five, say yes.
Yes.
Oppose, no. Article twenty-five is adopted unanimously. Article twenty-six, to see if the town will vote to appropriate $40,000 from free cash to purchase and equip the vehicle for use by the Animal Control Department or take any other action relative thereto. Motion in second. Discussion of twenty-six. All in favor of Article twenty-six, say yes.
Yes.
Oppose, no. Article twenty-six is adopted unanimously. Article twenty-seven, to see if the town will vote to transfer $71,600 in free cash to fund the following capital projects. Sand, caulk, prime and paint the exterior of the library, $18,700. Purchase and install energy-efficient exterior lighting at the library, $6,500. Replace 1,500 square feet of carpet with LVT flooring at the senior center, $16,000. Install backup cooling for police network server room, $14,500. Install hot water recirculating lines in police cell block, $15,900, or take any other action relative thereto. We have a motion in second. Discussion of twenty-seven. Ms. Landeville.
On the install of the hot water recirculating for the police cell block, none of that was included or part of the boilers we replaced?
Todd Decoudo, 6th Harvey Lane, Facilities Manager. No, that was not part of the job on, for the hot water. The research lines that are being put in, it's come to my attention, the Commonwealth has a threshold of 110 degrees in a wash basin or a sink. We've currently have not made that threshold for the last, I think, 10 years, it's been 100 degrees to 96 degrees. Add these research lines will get us instant hot water, and we will meet the Commonwealth's threshold.
The discussion of twenty-seven. All in favor of Article twenty-seven, say yes.
Yes.
Oppose, no. Article twenty-seven is adopted unanimously. Article twenty-eight, to see if the town will vote to transfer $35,000 from Water Sewer retained earnings to add to the salary expense for the Water Sewer Superintendent to provide sufficient funds to allow the DPW to hire a new DPW, Water Superintendent to commence employment prior to the retirement of the current DPW Water Superintendent, so to allow for transition to the position or take any other action relative thereto. Motion in second. Discussion of twenty-eight. All in favor of adopting Article twenty-eight, say yes.
Yes.
Oppose, no. Article twenty-eight is adopted unanimously. Article twenty-nine A, to see if the town will vote to appropriate $336,402 in free cash to fund capital purchases for Whitman Schools as follows. 20 network switches for Conley, Duval and Whitman Middle Schools, $73,930, and 103 touch view interactive panels for Whitman Schools, $262,472, or take any other action relative thereto. Motion in second. Discussion of twenty-nine A. Yes, sir.
Do the current network switches and touch view panels operative, are they operative? Number two, how does a network switch wear out?
Mr. Small?
Frederick Small, 87 Hilltop Road, Whitman Hansen School Committee. The network switches are obsolete, they do require software updating, as well as if you needed technical support to set parameters. They're simply very old. It's well past their life cycle, they need to be replaced. The touch view screens, we do have a majority that are still working, but they are from the mid 2000s to the 2010 era. They do need to be replaced. The old-fashioned paranthium boards that the markers were on, as well as with the overhead screens, they're last generation's technology. We need to keep up, and we need to be able to provide the proper education, and these are tools that we use, the same as a mechanic going from an open-ended wrench to a socket set. Obviously, you always have to keep updating your tools.
Any other discussion of twenty-nine A? Mr. McNeil?
Yes, so quickly, appreciate Fred's comments, I don't want to repeat them, but essentially, I'm here as a member of the Capitol Committee. We had vetted this particular request, and I think we hammered it pretty hard as far as to why they needed to be replaced, and how old they were, and so on and so forth. So, I think at this point, you know, I would appreciate your support for this article based on the fact that the Capitol Committee has, you know, quite a few members, and we've all gone around the same, you know, page multiple times and spinning the tires on talking about this topic. You know, it directly affects the education of the students, just because we don't, they don't have, you know, network switches that, you know, they need to succeed, if you will. Unfortunately, the equipment is old, it's no longer supported, the security fixes that, you know, need to be in place, you know, can't be put in place because the software on the hardware is no longer supported. So at the end of the day, I don't want to waste any more of your time, I just hope that, you know, folks can understand that unfortunately, the equipment is aged to the point where we need to do something, so. Thank you.
Discussion of twenty-nine A. Ms. Landeville.
If I have a question as far as this for the 336. If you turn the page, it also says that this will include Whitman Hansen's worn-out switches, but yet Article 29B is asking for an additional 205,895 for the high school switches.
We are discussing 29A, just to, just to be clear. Mr. Small?
Could I address that real quick?
Okay.
It does need to be a separate article, because the cost of the high school is shared by the district with Hansen, so it needs to be broken out separately. 29A is only for the Whitman Schools. So what we're voting on right now is only the Whitman Schools, nothing to do with the regional school district or the shared school, which is the high school.
So why does the explanation say that if passage of this article, if approved, will fund Whitman's portion of the 43 network switches at the regional high school?
The explanation applies to both articles with one explanation. So if passed, the first portion would apply to the Whitman Schools, and the second would apply to the regional high school.
So in other words, I just want to make sure I fully understand and town may fully understand, so in other words, this 336,402 for this article, and assuming the next, of course, we're going to discuss the next article, is that plus 336 plus the 205?
That is correct, that's why they're broken out separately. So one for the Whitman Schools, and the separate for the high school. And this was also vetted by the Capitol Committee, as Josh had said, I do sit on that committee as well.
Mr. McNeil?
Yeah, one final comment, I think the number is what's really stirring the question here as far as the total amount. You know, there's, I think, a mix here between not only the hardware, but there's also installation costs that are also associated with this that are bundled together, and I think that's where the, the question may lie. So if that's where, hopefully that answers your question, you know, if there's additional questions, feel free, but again, it's something that we really need to do to, to make things work for the district.
Ms. Byers?
Thank you. Dawn Byers, 20 Russell Road, Whitman Hansen School Committee member. I'm also the Chair of the Subcommittee for the Operations and Technology Capitol Committee for the district. I just wanted to note, as far as the quantity here of the network switches, and I think that's what people are looking at, the portion of the 336,000 is 73,000, and it is identified as 20 network switches. So, just in turning to the previous article, the town itself and IT Director had requested an Article 25, also network switches for a cost. So I'm not comparing us to the town, but just the validity of the equipment needed when it becomes obsolete as Chair, excuse me, as member Fred Small had just said as well.
Other discussion of 29A. All in favor of Article 20, oh, sorry, go ahead, ma'am, sorry.
Stephanie Blackman, 18 Pearl Street. I'm just curious where we are considering, where the town is considering a new Whitman Middle School, whether it makes sense to make this kind of investment in equipment for the next couple of years? Uh-oh, Mr. Pharaoh's coming up, I'm in trouble. I'm just trying to figure out, you know, it seems like it's a big investment for something that might only be a couple of years, so, just curious.
Mr. Small?
And the Capitol Committee had the very same concerns when it came to purchasing equipment for the middle school. The discussion ended up being, not only are the schools in need of these boards, but the town departments, the fire department, when he opens up his emergency operations center with inclement weather, he's operating on in chief, I don't want to put words in your mouth, but was it 20-something years old, that board with the? Okay. You know, so different town departments are working with older technology as well. So a good repurpose where the town of Whitman is paying for that technology to repurpose it to other, other areas. When we hopefully move into a new middle school, everything will be brand-new, and it will also come with some subsidies from the state or from MSBA as well. I don't know if every towns member is aware, the school district suffered a breach last summer that put us back god knows how far. Our business manager, Mr. Stambrook, deserves every accolade and commendation you can imagine for what he has done in trying to reconstruct all the data that was lost. There are some bad people out there. FBI was involved, Homeland Security was involved, and it cost the district a ton of money, or I should say, it cost everybody a ton of money because it's every taxpayer that it costs, as well as an insurance company. That's why it's so important to keep up to date with the network switches, with the technology, to have the proper firewall walls and to have the proper plans in place to stop these bad actors. Please support this article. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Hi, Sarah Byers, twenty Russell Road. I just want to echo what Mr. Small said, as a student who went to Duval School, Whitman Middle, and Whitman Hanson High School, using the current technology. The stylus required for writing on the board did not always function properly. Our teachers would have to take time away from class to recalibrate the stylus in order for it to write where it was put. Replacing these boards is a wise choice for both the teachers to teach and the students to learn without these technology delays. Thank you.
Other discussion of twenty-nine A. All in favor of adopting Article twenty-nine A, say yes.
Yes.
Oppose, no. Twenty-nine A is adopted unanimously. Article twenty-nine B, to see if the town will vote to appropriate two hundred and five thousand eight hundred dollars and ninety-five cents from the town's capital stabilization account to fund capital purchases for the Whitman Hanson Regional High School, subject to and conditioned upon a vote by the town of Hanson to appropriate its share of the cost for the following Whitman Hanson Regional High School purchase as follows. Forty-three network switches for high school, one hundred and fifty-eight thousand nine hundred and forty-nine dollars and fifty cents, times sixty point six one percent is ninety-six thousand three hundred and thirty-nine dollars and twenty-nine cents, and seventy-five touch view interactive panels for the high school, one hundred and eighty thousand six hundred dollars, times sixty point six one percent equals one hundred and nine thousand four hundred and sixty-one dollars and sixty-six cents, or take any other action relative thereto. We have a motion and second discussion of twenty-nine B. Ms. Landiville.
Has Hanson voted yet?
Mr. Small?
Fred Small. Hanson is going to be addressing this at their fall town meeting, is what I'm told. So they haven't voted yet. The money would just simply sit in an account and be encumbered until such time it would be spent. So we wouldn't be spending any of that money until Hanson votes it.
If Hanson votes no, does this go back?
Yes.
Other questions on twenty-nine B? All right, all in favor of adopting Article twenty-nine B? This does require a two-thirds vote. Say aye, say yes?
Aye, yes.
Oppose, say no. Article twenty-nine B is adopted unanimously. Article thirty, to see if the town will vote to transfer fifty-three thousand three hundred and ninety-two dollars and ninety-seven cents from free cash to reimburse the Whitman Hanson Regional School District for mold remediation costs at the Whitman Middle School, or take any other action relative thereto. Motion and second discussion of thirty. All in favor of Article thirty, say yes?
Yes.
Oppose, no. Article thirty is adopted unanimously. Article thirty-one, to see if the town will vote to appropriate, oh, I'm sorry, we already, we've already done thirty-one, that's right. Moving on to thirty-two, the Community Preservation Committee requests to see if the town will vote to, will vote to adopt a general bylaw codified at Chapter Seven, Article Four, Section seven-ten and seven-eleven, governing the Community Preservation Committee as follows. Article Four, Community Preservation Committees, Section seven-ten, there shall be a Community Preservation Committee consisting of nine members. At least one member shall be appointed from the Planning Board, as designated by that board, one from the Conservation Commission, as designated by that commission, one from the Housing Authority, as designated by that authority, one from the Historical Commission, as designated by that commission, one from the Recreation Commission, as designated by that commission, and four from at-large, appointed by the Board of Selectmen. Section seven-eleven, the committee shall be responsible for evaluating the community preservation needs of the town and making recommendations to town meeting as part of the annual budget process. The committee shall act under the authority of and in accordance with Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter forty-four B, Sections three-seven, or take any action relative thereto. Do we have a motion? A motion and a second discussion. All right, all in favor of adopting Article thirty-two, say yes?
Yes.
Oppose, no. Article thirty-two is adopted unanimously. Article thirty-three, to see if the town will vote to transfer thirty thousand dollars from the Open Space Resource Reserve Balance to fund fifteen new picnic tables for Whitman Town Park. Motion and second discussion of thirty-three. All in favor of Article thirty-three, say yes?
Yes.
Oppose, no. Article thirty-three is adopted unanimously. Article thirty-four, to see if the town will vote to transfer forty thousand dollars from the Community Preservation Community Housing Reserve Balance and seventy-five thousand eight hundred and eighty-one dollars from the Community Preservation General Fund Balance to fund Stetson Terrace Underground Wiring Replacement, or take any other action relative thereto. Motion and second discussion of thirty-four. All in favor of Article thirty-four, say yes?
Yes.
Oppose, no. Article thirty-four is adopted unanimously. Article thirty-five, to see if the town will vote to appropriate or reserve from fiscal year twenty-twenty-four Community Preservation Fund estimated annual revenues and the amounts recommended by the Community Preservation Committee for the committee administrative expenses, community preservation projects, and other expenses in fiscal year twenty-twenty-three, with each item to be considered as separate appropriation, appropriation as follows. Community Preservation Committee administrative expenses, nine thousand seven hundred and thirty-seven dollars, representing five percent of the FY twenty-twenty-four estimated revenues. Funding source is FY twenty-twenty-four estimated revenues. Historic Resource Reserve, twenty-seven thousand eight hundred and twenty dollars, representing ten percent of FY twenty-twenty-four estimated revenues. Funding source is FY twenty-twenty-four estimated revenues and state match of FY twenty-twenty-three collections. Community Housing Reserve, twenty-seven thousand eight hundred and twenty dollars, representing ten percent of the FY twenty-twenty-four estimated revenues. Funding source FY twenty-twenty-four estimated revenues and state match of FY twenty-twenty-three collections. Open Space Reserve, twenty-seven thousand eight hundred and twenty dollars, representing ten percent of FY twenty-twenty-four estimated revenues. The funding source is FY twenty-twenty-four estimated revenues and state match of FY twenty-twenty-three collections, or take any other action relative thereto. We have a motion and a second. Mr. Evans?
A motion to amend.
We have a motion to amend.
So two slight changes. In the first line, I'd like to strike or reserve, we're voting to appropriate the money from fiscal twenty-four Community Preservation Funds, and in the last line, change the fiscal year to twenty-twenty-four, the year that we plan on spending it.
Okay, so we have an amendment here to strike or reserve from the first line and change fiscal year twenty-twenty-three to twenty-twenty-four in the last sentence before the chart. Discussion of the proposed amendment. All right, all in favor of amending the article as such, say yes?
Yes.
Oppose, no? Okay, the article is amended. Discussion of the amended article. All right, all in favor of Article thirty-five as amended, say yes?
Yes.
Oppose, no? All right, the amended Article thirty-five is adopted unanimously. Article thirty-six, to see if the town will vote to transfer twenty thousand dollars from Community Preservation Historic Resource Reserve Balance to fund a town of Whitman inventory of historic resources, or take any other action relative thereto. We have a motion and a second discussion of thirty-six. All in favor of Article thirty-six, say yes?
Yes.
Oppose, no? Thirty-six is adopted unanimously. To see if the town will vote to reduce the age of eligibility of Clause forty-one C tax exemption applicants to sixty-five years of age, is allowed in Massachusetts General Law, Chapter fifty-nine, Section five, Clause forty-one C, or take any other action relative thereto. Motion and a second discussion of thirty-seven. All in favor of Article thirty-seven, say yes?
Yes.
Oppose, no?
No.
Article thirty-seven is adopted. Article thirty-eight, citizens petition, amendment to Finance Committee bylaw. By way of a citizens petition, we request the town of Whitman bylaw, Article one, Chapter seven-one, be changed from, there shall be a finance committee of nine citizens of the town who shall be sworn to a faithful performance of their duties. The moderator shall appoint three members for three years at each annual town meeting, no member of which may hold any other elective office or be a member of any other committee, except that a member may be appointed to a building or facilities committee with approval of the town moderator and Board of Selectmen. Whitman bylaw, Article one, Chapter seven-one, shall now read, there shall be a finance committee of nine citizens of the town who shall be sworn to a faithful performance of their duties. The moderator shall bring forward to the Board of Selectmen all candidates to fill vacancies and may make a recommendation to fill the positions. The Board of Selectmen shall, at the first meeting in July of each year, appoint three members of said committee whose term of office shall be for three years. No member of which may hold any other elective town office or be a member of any other committee, except that a member may be appointed to a building or facilities committee with the approval of the town moderator and Board of Selectmen. We have a motion and a second discussion. Discussion of thirty-eight. Mr. Anderson?
The Finance Committee in a unanimous vote, zero-nine-zero, does not recommend this article. To understand the implications of adopting this article, we look to the preface at the Finance Committee Handbook, written by the Association of Town Finance Committees of Massachusetts. In this manual, a broad description of the roles of both the Board of Selectmen and the Finance Committee are compared to that of the state and federal government. The Select Board and the Town Administrator are part of the executive branch of government. Their job is to collect budget information, develop budget priorities, and formulate a balanced budget. Once developed, that budget is presented to the Finance Committee, representing the legislative branch, this town meeting. This creates the independent review process. What Article thirty-eight would do, if adopted, is upend this by making the Finance Committee accountable to the Board of Selectmen. This ultimately would handicap town meetings' ability to vote on all financial matters when the recommendations are coming from one source. Separations of powers was designed by our founding fathers for a reason. There can be no question that this Finance Committee in its current form has been instrumental in saving this town millions of taxpayer dollars in the past five years alone. Members of this committee have demanded accountability for things like non-mandated busing, the use of the statutory method of assessment, and Chapter ninety. Our moderator has appointed a very dedicated cross-section of this community to represent your financial interests. We ask that you continue to support these efforts and vote no on this article. Thank you.
Mr. Hayes?
Thank you, Mr. Honore. Ladies and gentlemen, my name is Michael Hayes, I live at eighteen Diane Terrace. I had the privilege of serving as your moderator for thirty years, so this proposed amendment, article, the men, the Finance Committee bylaws, are sort of near and dear to me, and I stand in very strong opposition to it, pretty much what Mr. Anderson said, he pretty much summed it up pretty effectively. But the existing bylaw has been in effect for many, many years and is uncomplicated, is nonpartisan, and is highly, highly effective. The moderator who is accountable to the voters makes three appointments and reappointments on the Finance Committee, three each year. The moderator does not attend or oversee the Finance Committee meetings, but the full committee complement of nine members and its continuity are key objectives for the moderator, so you don't want to have complete turnovers year in and year out. This proposed bylaw, I believe, greatly complicates the process. It'll go, it calls for five members of the Board of Selectmen to agree on the moderator's recommendations, not necessarily agreeing with it, but make the recommendation. That in itself could result in some time lapses of agreement on what the recommendations are and what the Finance, what the Board of Selectmen may want to have for members. Appointments not made due to disagreements on the board would leave the Finance Committee understaffed. That's inefficient for the running of the town meeting. These people need to be there all the time, they need nine members here to do their job efficiently. The proposal is unnecessary and totally unwarranted. I would ask you to please support the moderator and the Finance Committee and vote no on the article and please maintain the existing bylaw. Thank you very much.
Discussion of thirty-eight, yes, sir.
Chris Scriven, three sixty-three School Street. I'd just like to ask the Board of Selectmen why this is on the warrant, what the rationale is, and, you know, for something that served us as well as it has for as long as it has, for it to be on the warrant, I'd like to hear some kind of explanation, please.
This is a citizens petition. Citizen can petition, they get ten signatures on it, and it appears on our warrant. That's the process. Yes, sir.
Gregory Eaton, five Volt High Street. So I'm the one who brought forth this amendment. This amendment isn't without precedent. The town of East Bridgewater uses their Board of Selectmen to appoint their FINCOM members. The FINCOM is appointed by one person and one person only in this town. That makes it so that the moderator has basically a dictatorship on who's allowed on the FINCOM. Does anyone know what any of the qualifications of the people on this board are? There's no real vetting process at all for the FINCOM members, and I'm not saying that they are unqualified for their positions. I'm just saying that it's incumbent upon the town to have people that are qualified and willing to serve their community on this board. And it's incumbent upon all of us as members of this town to know what those qualifications are and to watch that vetting process happen. And presently, the way that it happens now, there is no vetting process, at least in the public eye. So that's the reason why I've brought forth this petition to change the bylaw, is to make it so that it would be a more transparent process about who gets onto our FINCOM. It's very simple right now, the only way to get onto our FINCOM is to be buddies with the town moderator.
Out of line. Way out of line.
Mr. O'Tina?
Marshall O'Tina, one hundred Laisel Street. I'm not going to even address that, I'm just going to piggyback on what Mr. Anderson and Mr. Hayes have said. We're here tonight at town meeting and the bulk of our work is financial, you know, putting together Article Two and the budget. That comes together through debate. Debate comes from two parties, it comes from the Board of Selectmen and the Finance Committee. Allowing the Selectmen to handpick their own Finance Committee eliminates the debate, it just gets the, you know, I'm not saying this is what would happen, but when you eliminate the debate, eliminate, you know, if they're responsible to the Board of Selectmen, they're accountable to them, you know, it eliminates any back and forth. There's contention between the Board of Selectmen and the Finance Committee, that's how it should be, they shouldn't be buddy-buddy and, you know, like, oh, we'll do what you want, you want to do, and we'll do what you want. This is how we get there, please allow the Finance Committee remain independent.
Yes, Mr. Evans?
Tom Evans, sixty-eight Temple Street, Unit three oh seven. I am in strong opposition to this, this article. I really question the intent of it. Nobody's saying it, but I don't see what's wrong. I've gone to this town meeting for fifty-five years, and for fifty-five years, hopefully after the end of this one, we've given our Finance Committee a standing ovation for one reason, for their hard work, their diligence, no pay, no thanks. And the other thing is, what's wrong with it? They say East Bridgewater has it, I don't care what anybody has. Our community is our community and we are going to decide what's right. We vote for the moderator. I dare anybody to charge anyone with being favoritism, and I thank you, sure, Dan, for what you yelled out, inappropriate. Thank you.
Other discussion of thirty-eight. All in favor of Article thirty-eight, say yes? Oppose, no?
No.
Article thirty-eight is defeated. Article thirty-nine, citizens petition, NIP ban requires amendment, amend Section one-oh-six or add Section one-oh-seven, proposed article, prohibition of the NIP plastic alcohol containers. Section one, purpose, to see if the town will vote to amend the town of Whitman general bylaws by prohibiting the sale of alcoholic beverages and containers less than or equal to fifty milliliters in order to prevent plastic waste and promote safer roads. Section two, regulated contact, A, no retail establishment in the town of Whitman shall provide alcoholic beverages and containers less than or equal to fifty milliliters. Section three, enforcement, the Board of Health and its health agents shall have the authority to administer and enforce this bylaw. B, for the first violation, the enforcing authority upon determination that a violation has occurred shall issue a written warning notice to the establishment specifying the violation. C, the following penalty shall apply, one, a fine of fifty dollars shall apply to the first violation following the issuance of a written warning notice. Two, a fine of one hundred dollars shall apply for the second violation, any additional violation of this bylaw after the issuance of a written warning notice. D, fines shall be cumulative, and each day on which a violation occurs shall constitute a separate offense. Section four, effective date, the bylaw shall take effect one-one twenty-two-four. The Board may exempt a retail establishment from the requirements of this section for a period of up to six months, upon finding by the Board that the requirements of this section would cause undue hardship. Do we have a motion? And a second? All right, we have a motion and a second discussion of Article thirty-nine. Mr. Salvucci?
Dan Salvucci, thirty-four A, Lance Ave, Vice Chair of Board of Selectmen. You know, every year, when we set the tax rate, how we set it up, we do a factor of one. That means the businesses and the homeowners pay the same per valuation of their property. I have always helped and voted to help I have always helped and voted to help all businesses in Whitman because we don't have a lot of businesses, other than car dealerships, but, I mean, we don't have a lot of businesses. And for us to do something like this, I think, is wrong because I, my wife and I walk the grandchildren down School Street. Yeah, do I see a couple of nips? Yeah, but I also see straws. I also see Dunkin' Donuts cups. Are we going to tell Dunkin' Donuts they can't sell takeout or not to use straws? It's an issue that I don't think that prohibiting the sale of nips and hurting town businesses that sell them would help it at all, because people would just buy it from out of town. You can't prevent people from throwing stuff, but I don't think we should penalize businesses in Whitman and hurt them by doing this. So I would ask you to vote no on this and keep businesses as friendly, let the town be as friendly as possible to the businesses that we do have in Whitman and support them. And I know the state is coming up with an article themselves, and if the state does it, it's not on us, it's on them. But the fact is, I don't think we should not, we should go against anything that would hinder businesses from doing business. It's that simple. Thank you.
Other discussion of Article 39. Yes, sir.
Hello, I am James Malito, 5 Butternut Lane, and I'm here representing Whitman Hansen Regional High School Seek, or Student Environmental Awareness Program. And I get the concerns brought by Mr. Salvucci. I get the concerns brought by the businesses. Temple Street Reclamation, especially the Archimachus Center, was a huge help for my Ego project. I have an immense amount of appreciation and support for all they've done. But the reality is that this is beyond just a few nips. This is beyond just looking down at the side of the road, seeing a few things, and walking away. On a single mile of Franklin Street in front of the high school, in the single hour, we picked up 350 nips. Hanson, this weekend, had a cleanup which picked up almost 1,000 nips. This, anyone who has gone down the side of the road can see this is more than just a small problem. The plastic nips it made out of has not degraded for 450 years, and I understand the burden on businesses, which is why we included in Article 4 the section where we allow an upwards of six-month extension for businesses that have an undue hardship brought about by this law. We care for the businesses, and yet we ultimately have to care for our planet more, because this is doing more than just hurting our communities, making the sidewalks look ugly or having litter on the side. This is dangerous. There have been nips found on students, in school property, and nearby the school. Every single one of the 350 nips we found represents some driver or some person who took an irresponsible opportunity, drinking something they shouldn't have, and now gambling with their life. Recently, I lost someone because of a dumb mistake on the road, and these nips, which are easy to conceal, easy to steal from parents, and very easy to drink, and this is hard liquor, will cause these stupid mistakes. I don't want to have to take someone's brother, someone's mother, someone's father, someone people care about, someone in this room, to die and to never be brought back. Do you understand that this goes beyond just some litter? This goes to our community. This, if we can't impact what other towns do, this is our chance to, as a community, say no. We're going to help ourselves, that we're going to do our part in making the world and making our community a safer, a happier, and a more environmentally friendly place. I also like to have a motion for my peers in the non-voting section to speak their piece regarding the law.
Unfortunately, as visitors, they're not permitted to speak.
Okay, sorry.
Yes, ma'am.
Danielle Clancy, 21 Bloss Road. I am the Chair of the Board of Health. Last year, a high school group brought forward the plastic bag ban, and it is my department that is enforcing that, and we are doing it. It was a little tough at first, but we are managing. Again, it is my department that is going to be tasked with enforcing this. I appreciate your enthusiasm. I disagree that nips are the cause of death, alcoholism, and everything else. I think alcohol is the cause of these problems. Nips are just a vehicle. People are going to have their vehicle for alcohol, no matter what they are. If they can't buy their nips in Whitman, they're going to buy them wherever they can. I am for whatever the town decides. I really don't have a feeling either way. Again, we are one health agent in the Board of Health. I want you to remember that each year when we come here to decide these things. This is, again, a citizen's petition. They got 10 votes, write-ins, and were able to bring this forward. We have one health agent who enforces your sewer hookups, all the tenant problems we have in town, all the rodent problems we have in town, all the landlord-tenant problems we have in town, and everything else. And now we go by and we police plastic bags, and we're about to start policing nips. I feel like we're becoming a punitive department in town rather than a health-forward, a positive public agency, and that's really what we're tasked to do as the health department. So I would just like you to keep that in mind as you take a vote for this. Again, I'm not for or against it. I feel that alcohol is the problem and not nips. You know, when people have a problem with it, it's alcohol and not the nip vehicle that it's in. Nips are just a vehicle for alcohol. But again, I will do whatever you wish, and our health agent, I did check with him. I said, all right, do you feel like you're overworked? And if they put this in place, is this going to be too much for you? He said, I like being busy. So he is busy. So just keep that in mind when you vote for that. And, you know, again, it's the health department that's going to enforce this. And, you know, I really don't want to be seen around town as another, as a punitive agency. We are trying to do positive things in town. Thank you.
Mr. Kane.
Just, Mr. Moderator, are the students able to speak if the, if the town meeting would like them to?
If the town, if the meeting wants to take a vote and allow it?
I'll make that motion.
I'll make that motion.
Motion in a second. Discussion of that? Yes, sir.
Dennis Schick, 36 Lance Ave., Air Force veteran and a resident of Whitman since 1944. If we start arbitrarily selecting businesses and find them responsible for what happens to their product, actively leaves the store...
We're considering the motion to let the...
I'm sorry?
At the moment, we're considering the motion to let the students speak. Then we'll return to further discussion of this article.
Am I too close to this thing?
No, sir, that's not the issue. The issue is we have a motion on the floor to allow the students to speak. They're not residents of the town, so we need a motion and a vote to allow that to happen. So we have to, we have to take care of that first, and then, then we can continue on with your comments.
So I can't continue?
You'll get, in a moment, after we consider this, this motion.
Well, once it leaves the store, it's nobody's problem except the person that bought it, because you can't stop them in convenience stores, they're selling cigarettes and finding butts all over the place. You could probably buy more cigarette ruckbutts than you could nip bottles. So if you start arbitrarily picking businesses and telling them what they can and can't sell, you're going down one hell of a slippery slope.
We have a motion and a second to allow the visiting students to speak. All in favor, say yes.
Yes.
Opposed, no?
No.
The floor is yours. I think they're making their way to the microphone. Or they got lost.
Hi, my name is Riley Getchel, 536 South Ave. I am here with Whitman Hansen's Student Environmental Awareness Club, and this year we got more than 10 signatures and drafted a citizen's petition to ban the sale of alcohol in containers less than 50 milliliters. Two years ago today, we stood here with a similar, with a similar issue we are urging you to support. Today, the one we have presented before you is not just environmental, but also a social problem. As James said, we hosted a cleanup of Franklin Street and found over 350 nips. And in Hanson last weekend, they've, in many areas that bordered Hanson and Whitman, they found upwards of 1,000 nips. And some of my classmates are going to explain their reasons why you should support this article.
Olivia Seriano, 524 Franklin Street. So living on Franklin Street in Whitman, nips are a common occurrence on my front yard, and just the 350 that we found was a shocking statistic, not to mention that they won't decompose for 450 years, which is like six generations from now. And even more concerning was the fact that they were found on a main road, which means that people are, in fact, dumping them from their cars, suggesting they are drinking while driving. So it is an environmental issue, but it's also a health one, too. So banning nips means eradicating a prominent and dangerous source of waste plaguing our community, more than just ending littering altogether. Also, that they are too small to be recycled, so the most viable solution to take them off our streets responsibly is to ban them altogether.
I'm Emma Galleyhugh, a junior at Whitman Hansen, and I don't like to see my peers have easy access to alcohol. I don't like to see legal adults finding a convenient way to drink and drive, and I don't like the impact nips have on our environment. The nip ban is very, very important to me and my friends.
Hi, my name is Amy Yanoz. I'm a current junior at Whitman Hansen High, and I'm also a resident of Whitman. Sorry. I believe that we should ban the nips because, as someone who went to both of the cleanups on Franklin Street and Hanson, I did see the amount of nips, and they are very scary because it's just everywhere. And I also live right next to the library, and they have incorporated a little, like, playground there, and while over there, you can just see piles and piles of nips around, which is even worse since it's around children. So I think along with that, and the fact that it takes almost 450 years for it to break down, it will just completely harm the environment as long as the wildlife. Thank you so much.
Hi, my name is Leila Kirby, and I am a current junior at Whitman Hansen. Last Saturday, I attended the Green Hanson Cleanup, where we, as a community, found over 989 nips, and I also went to a cleanup at the high school where we found over 300 nips. We, as a community, need to come together and ban this product because it encourages underage drinking, and it's not eco-friendly. Okay, thank you.
I'm Gianna Young. I'm a student at Whitman Hansen High School, and I have firsthand seen nips thrown away in the bathrooms of our school, proving that teenagers have access to them and are consuming them on school property when they're supposed to be learning or being in a safe environment at school, further proving why we should ban nips.
Hi, my name is Isabel Miller. I'm a current senior at Whitman Hansen, and yes, nips are absolutely a much bigger problem than the little bottles, but whatever we can do to stop such a big social and environmental problem helps. Thank you for listening to us, and we hope to have your support for Article 39. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Danielle Clancy, 21 Bloss Road. I guess you're going to have to answer for your friends because they aren't still there. So one of our jobs as the Board of Health is we're tasked with the fines for our businesses and determining those fines. So I guess I'd like to ask you and your group, and again, I'm not for or against this, whatever the town decides, what you think are fair fines for our businesses in town? And is it every instance? Is it every day? Is it...
So within an article, we do have, within articles in the bylaw, we do have our fining structure, in which after a written declaration, the first fine will be 50, and subsequent fines will be 100 repeatedly. Yet again, if you wish to propose an amendment lessening these fines, altering these fines, I'm willing to discuss that with you, but as the law, as the bylaw stands, is a written warning, then a $50 fine for the first infraction of the law, and then any subsequent infractions incur $100.
So if they're selling three days in a row, they would get a warning, then a $50 fine, and then a 100 fine, and then...
Another $100 fine for...
Every day after that?
Yes, but also we...
And then, so what happens if we go back next week and they're selling again? Is that $100?
Well, yes, because all subsequent, because all subsequent fractions, if it's saying, you have the written warning, after written warning, and after $50, all subsequent fines for any other time period is $100. But also, that's why we made it so the implementation date is the first of January of next year, and gave a six, up to upwards of six-month grace period for many businesses so they can make the transition and discuss any undue burns the law might have on them.
That didn't work very well with plastic bags.
Mr. Visanson.
Thank you.
Brian Visanson, 74 Rock Street, former member of the Board of Selectmen. This is very altruistic. I understand how these kids want this to happen, but you're not going to stop alcoholism by banning nips in Whitman 6.9 square miles. They're just going to get ticked off, they're going to buy them in Abington, they're going to buy them in Hanson, they're going to buy them in Brockton, and they're going to throw out twice as many in Whitman because they're ticked off the fact that you just banned it. Let's get real here. This is, this will turn into government overreach. With the plastic bags, we banned it, right? So what did they do? They came out with heavy-duty plastic bags, and now Walmart and some of these other retailers in town have a heavier duty, they call it recycle. They're still using plastic bags. You didn't solve anything. You just, they paid more for the bag and they passed it on to you. I haven't bought a nip since probably 1977. I don't use them. I might have three beers a year. It's not about that. It's about your freedom, and it's about government overreach, banning things they got no business banning, putting burdens on our businesses that struggle as it is now. Have you seen the cost of what a six-pack of beer is now? Well, I'm sure it's pretty cheaper for Bud Light. But that being said, this is a huge mistake because 50 milliliters. You know what the manufacturers are going to do? They're going to make them 51. You're wasting your time until the state comes out with a ban statewide. This is a waste of time. I understand the kid's idea, makes perfect sense. Alcoholism is tough. Drinking and driving is tough. This is not the answer.
Chris Griffin, 363 School Street, current resident of Whitman and charter member of the Student Environmental Awareness Club. I think what we are witnessing here is leadership and vision by our younger members of our community. And so often, we, as elected officials in this town, complain to each other about lack of engagement, right? Now, we have students coming here with a, with an initiative because they're looking to the future, their future. They understand the implications of not being good stewards of our planet. Pure and simple. So they're bringing this to us with their leadership, hoping that we can support them. We turn them away? What's the message we send? These liquor stores are going to go out of business because they don't sell nips? I don't think so. Let's show some vision about the future and the well-being of our planet and support these kids. Thank you.
Other discussion of 39. Yes, sir.
Hello, my name is Tom Vemus. My family, the Vemus family owns Regal Marketplace, and though we don't live here anymore in Whitman, I like to say, I kind of grew up in Whitman, too. I went to Mary Deb, I went to the Park Ave. School for kindergarten, and I'd like to say I spent a lot more time at Regal in Whitman than I pretty much do at home. A lot of the faces here are faces I see over the last 25 years at Regal, and I've grown more than just customers. And I love Whitman. And I love Whitman. It's a part of my family. My family immigrated here, and this town gave us opportunity. And that's the reason when the time came, we doubled down in this town. And I understand the previous gentleman's point. We might not go out of business, we probably won't, but we'd have to make cuts. Those cuts are staff, those cuts are how we give back to our community, and it's an unfortunate side effect of what this could do. To the other point is, I like to commend these kids because it does take guts to come up here and come up with a potential vision, like you were saying, to make our world better. I agree. We have a littering issue. It is not unique to nips. Like it's been pointed out before, there are a lot of things that are on our streets: scratch tickets, cups. And though the staggering amount of nips is huge, I'd say, I'd like to argue, five to 10 nips equals one large Dunkin' Donuts cup. So the amounts are staggering, but when you put them in perspective, they are equal to anything else that's out there. What I propose is that we say no to this, and I welcome these kids to come and meet me in my conference room where we can develop a plan to beautify and clean up our town. Do not put the burden on our businesses that want to employ local people, keep business in Whitman, and at the end of the day, it's not going to stop the littering issue that we have. It's a tragedy of the commons, it's a mistake of the human nature, and we got to train our community to be better and clean up our community. And that's what I'd like to propose.
Other comments on 39. Yes, sir.
I move the question.
We have a motion to move the question. All in favor of moving to a vote on Article 39, say yes. Oppose, no. All right, we're going to move to a vote on Article 39. I remind our young students that you may not vote. All in favor of adopting Article 39, say yes. Oppose, no. I think we'll have to do a standing count on that one, folks. All in favor of adopting Article 39, please stand. If the tellers would count the votes in their areas, please. And if the tellers would report their numbers to the clerk, please. All right, you may sit. All opposed to Article 39, please stand. We have 56 in favor and 113 opposed, so the motion fails. The article fails. Article 40, citizens petition to see if the town will vote to amend the town's bylaw said the following provision: "All town boards and committees shall make an audio or audio-video recording of its public meetings, excluding that portion of those meetings conducted in executive session, and those meetings that are recorded for WHCA for Whitman-Hanson Cable Access Corporation (WHCA), and said recordings shall be transmitted to WHCA for broadcast and placement on youtube.com for further access, for future access, or take any other action relative thereto." We have a motion, a second. We have discussion on Article 40. Mr. Linum.
I am one of the petitioners who signed that petition, and I'd like to explain the rationale behind it. All of the appointed boards and elected boards and committees in the town of Whitman operate under the open meeting law. The open meeting law requires that those meetings be open and accessible to everyone who wishes to attend or, if appropriate, participate. You're probably familiar with the broadcast of the selectmen's meetings. You're probably also familiar with the broadcast for the planning board and the conservation commission when those meetings are broadcast. I found it interesting to hear the comments about the contributions that the finance committee makes toward the vetting and evaluation of requests that are presented before town meeting. And if, in fact, the comments and reviews that occur in these public meetings are of value to people, then they all should be available. It should not be limited only to the Board of Selectmen and the school committee. If your meeting is a public body, if you're taking a public position on a request, then people should be able to know that, they should be able to hear it. The town of Hanson broadcasts all of their meetings. Most of them end up on YouTube, and if you want to listen and hear the discussion and debate, you can do that. You can't do that here. I'd like to see that happen. Thank you.
Ms. Connolly.
Rose Mary Connolly, 405 Franklin. I am not in position with my committee on this. I have to agree with Frank on this matter, and I have to go back to that initial article when they said, "Who is on your finance committee and what are they bringing up?" Well, if they're videotaped, you're going to see you have an amazing finance committee. You're going to see the work we do. You're going to see us digging through laws and how it pertains to protecting your finances. You'll see that work, and I would have to say, anybody who has come to the meetings or regularly, you can talk to people who do go, they'll see. Our committee does do work, and in that process, we have, like Mr. Anderson has said, saved you millions of dollars reviewing and looking over things and questioning things. And it is your government. You should know every piece of it, every part of it. You should be involved at every level, not just here, but all the time. So, thank you.
Mr. Goldro.
John Goldrosen, 238 South Avenue. I'm chairman of the zoning board of appeals, and I urge you to vote no on this article. There's no appropriation proposed in this article to install video equipment in the room that we use, lower town hall. So if you're thinking that you're going to see as a result of this article, the kind of videotapes that you see of the Board of Selectmen meeting, that's just not the case. Now, during the pandemic, we were on Zoom, worked with Whitman-Hanson Community Access. They provided the platform, they provided the staff to record the meetings and post them online. And of course, we were all sitting there with our own computer camera, or phone cameras and microphones, so it worked. But we're back to doing live meetings now. So you're not going to get videotaped meetings. What you'll probably get are audiotapes. I can tell you in the case of our board, our secretary attends the meetings, takes notes at the meetings, and uses a digital tape recorder. I don't know if it's 10 years old, 20 years old, I don't know. And it's only to assist her and supplement what she remembers from the meeting. As a technical matter, I have no idea how we carry this out, how we make that recording available to Whitman-Hanson Community Access. But even if we can, the quality just isn't going to give you what you would hope for. It's not always possible, I've listened to that tape, not always possible on that tape to hear what's said at far end of the room, to make out who's speaking. If the meeting involves discussions of engineering plans or documents, you're not going to know that from hearing the recording. A far more effective solution, if the objective is to let the town know what the town boards do, which I'm fully supportive of, every town board must by state law submit its minutes of every meeting to the town clerk. The town administrator, the town clerk, and whoever's handling the town website could make PDFs of those minutes, put them up on the town website, on each board's webpage. That would be an effective way for you to know what's going on, rather than sitting and trying to listen through a couple hours of audiotape and make out what happened. So this would just be burdensome to the town boards and to the volunteers and the town boards. It won't accomplish whatever it's intended to accomplish in terms of transparency. And I also just finally want to make it clear, indeed, under the open meeting law, anyone can attend a meeting. It's also the case that anyone can attend a meeting and make an audio or video recording of that meeting, as long as they let the board know that they're doing it, and that can be posted online. Back in ancient history, 35 years ago or so, when I was chairman of the finance committee, we did have groups of citizens coming in and taping our meetings and putting it on cable access. You'll never guess which budget was, you know, the controversial budget at the time. But they had every right to do that, and I certainly have no problem with what we do being more public. I just don't think that this is an effective way to do it, and it's just going to create a burden and a lot of audiotapes that no one will ever listen to. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Chris Griffin, 363 School Street. Pretty sure everybody in this room might have one of these, and it has a mechanism that you can press a button and recall what you're saying. This is about, again, engagement, right? We want more transparency. We want more participation. This is a way to give people more access to what we're doing, and we shouldn't ever hesitate to have our meetings public, you know, just accessible to the public, right? We don't want to have conversations going on that the public doesn't have access to. So that's, we're going to improve the situation in terms of giving people more access and hopefully promoting more engagement by being more transparent. This is a no-brainer as far as I'm concerned. Thank you.
Mr. Galvin.
John Galvin, 41 High Street. I spent a lot of time in the last five years getting really deep into, I was a member of the finance committee, I'm on the middle school building committee, I'm attending a lot of Board of Selectmen meetings, I attend a lot of school committee meetings. I'm trying to participate as much as possible, but I can only be in one meeting at a time. Board of Selectmen meets on Tuesday night, finance committee meets on a Tuesday night. I can't go to both. I spent a lot of time on the WHCA YouTube page, listening to meetings, listening to school committee meetings. Just to, you know, we're not looking for video necessarily here. I don't even watch the videos. I just listen, I have my headsets on, I walk around the house, and I listen to what they're talking about. So those committees that, you know, don't get the video, we're not looking for video, just the audio, those audiotapes that your secretaries are recording, those are like a two-megabyte file. You take it off and you email it to WHCA, and they can get it up on YouTube within, you know, a certain amount of time. You know, WHCA is not going to come in and set up video equipment in all these meetings. All they're looking for is the audio for those recorders, because you all have them. You all are, you know, as a benefit to your recording secretary, so they can go back and do your minutes. When they're done with the minutes, email it to WHCA, and they'll get it up on YouTube so that, you know, everybody in this room can listen to it. I mean, I really like to listen to finance committee, I'd love to listen to Mr. Goldrosen's. I can't get to all those meetings, but I'd love to listen to them all. Please vote for this.
Ms. Landville.
Yes, I would like to know why the finance committee voted the way they did.
Mr. Anderson.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. The finance committee voted zero to five, with four members abstaining to not recommend this article. While there's certainly some merit to the principle of this article, there needs to be more effort made to assess the cost. And as you heard from Mr. Goldrosen, it's not just the financial cost, but we're looking at a significant cost to board members and participation and volunteers. So this is essentially a capital expense, and as such, should be evaluated by the Capitol Committee. The finance committee has not been provided any detail as to recording equipment or necessary staffing to process and archive the recordings. So just to make it clear to this town meeting, the finance committee is in complete compliance with all regulations requiring meeting minutes. The current process involves an audio recording solely for the recording secretary to create written draft minutes of the substance of the meeting. Once the final meeting minutes are adopted by the committee, the recording is no longer part of the public record. So I'd just like to have town meeting understand that, you know, there's significant costs, but they're not all financial associated with this article, and we strongly urge you not to recommend. Thank you.
Mr. McNeil.
Josh McNeil, Captain Allen Way. I really didn't want to get into this conversation tonight, to be honest with you. You know, I strongly urge you to vote for this article. I did submit a public records request in relation to a recording that was done, and unfortunately, the recording, in addition to that recording, you know, seven or eight other meetings that were recorded previous to that were also deleted. So, you know, something tells me that, you know, the information that, you know, the recording secretary is putting together may not exactly match what folks may get when the actual, you know, I mean, whatever's happening in the meeting is completely different than what the recording notes are, you know, that are being provided. If you provide, somebody provides you with the notes, they're not exactly what happened during the meeting. And I get it, obviously, there's information that may or may not be relevant to the conversation. But at the end of the day, I don't think we're getting a real indication of what went on in that meeting. There's many department heads, including myself, as the director of technology for this town, that go above and beyond and spend countless hours, you know, working to try and put a budget or whatever it might be together. And at the end of the day, we want the same respect that we give to all of the other departments that we work with. And, you know, we just, I mean, what we're finding, or what we've found, is that we're not seeing that. And frankly, I'm kind of, you know, quite upset to the fact that I had to get up here and have this conversation, because I really didn't want to share that information with you folks. But, you know, it's out there, many people know about it. And the fact of the matter is that we all need transparency. And from what I can tell right now is that we're not being fully transparent with our community by not sharing relevant information with you. I mean, I want to know exactly what happens in these meetings. I don't know about you, but if you're getting half the picture, how do you really understand what took place in those meetings? I mean, again, I think it's, I understand, you know, the information might not be, you know, fully together as far as how we're going to do this, but I think it was well-thought-out, and we do have the availability now to record these meetings in those rooms. You know, I mean, we may have a better solution we can come up with by passing it through the Capitol Committee and getting additional resources to do something more extravagant, but at the end of the day, we're not going to spend a significant amount of money to record meetings. We have these personal recorders, we have these cell phones that record meetings. You know, I think we have to have a clear mindset as to, number one, you know, what's the retention? I mean, we're simply recording these meetings to take notes? I don't think that's enough. I think we need to have better dialogue between our community, and we can't do that without showing what's happening during these meetings. So again, I think you need to, you know, think really hard about this, and I urge you to support the recordings. Thank you.
Ma'am. We have a motion to move the vote. Do you have a second on that? All right, all in favor...
Shouldn't they be allowed to speak before moving the question?
Didn't you just make a motion to move the vote? Yeah.
If people have been waiting to speak and have their hands up, they should be allowed to speak before you move the question.
I understood that you made a motion to move the vote. And once we have a motion to move the vote, it's debatable, and we put it to the group as to whether or not we want to vote right now, or do we want to continue discussion.
we want to vote right now, or do we want to continue discussion? Do you wish to withdraw the motion?
I have a motion.
I'm sorry?
I have a motion.
Okay, then we have a second. Okay, then we have, we have a motion to move the vote. So all in favor of moving to a vote, say yes.
No.
Oppose, no.
No.
Okay, the motion fails. Continue with the discussion. Ma'am.
Christie Zabani Toomey, 117 Washington Terrace. As a member of an appointed board, I don't oppose the intention behind it, but I feel that the onus should be on the town to provide us with a way to record our meetings and not on volunteers. People have suggested cellphones. I know personally, I could not record an hour-long meeting on my cellphone. I don't have that kind of capacity. So I'm not opposed to it, I just think that before something like this passes, there should be steps in place for how we should go about recording those meetings.
Further discussion. Yes, sir.
Bob Kimball, 877 Auburnville Way. First of all, I have a question to the legal counsel. These tapes are not records of the meeting. You have to have a meeting that's been written, you have the minutes submitted to the town clerk, they're available, they should be posted online, which they're not. So my first question is, are these tapes with the cable company legal records of the meeting?
Mr. Goldie.
So if I understand the question, you're asking, if there is a recording of a meeting, is that a public record? Once it is requested by somebody, it is a public record?
Who keeps the public record? The cable company? The town clerk? It should be after the town clerk to keep all these records, if they're public records.
Well, the town clerk doesn't keep all the public records. For example, each board is charged with keeping the minutes, and each department has their own records that are public. The town clerk's office doesn't keep all the public records for the town. The recordings themselves, I believe that the recordings of the, for example, the Board of Selectmen's meeting, I believe those are kept by WHCA, because they're the ones who are recording them.
Right, but we also have written records from the Selectmen's meeting.
Their minutes.
Their minutes, written records, those are the records of record, those are the minutes of record, not at the cable company.
Those are the minutes, those are two different things. There are minutes which you are required to prescribe under the open meeting law, and each board is responsible for creating their minutes and approving their minutes. The recordings, if there are recordings made, because public records can be digital, they could be emails, they're not just paper records. So if a recording is made and somebody makes a request for a recording in the possession of a municipal entity, that becomes a public record.
Is the cable company a public entity?
I'm not, the cable company's a private entity. You're not the governmental body, they're not the governmental body.
So it's not a public record in the presence?
I said, they're not a governmental body. If, if the, a public board creates a recording and somebody requests the recording, that is now a public record.
Secondly, I'm opposed to this, and the reason I'm opposed to it is the cost involved. Each board should be given a device to record, it should be separate than what the secretary is making the minutes from, and we should have a way of transmitting it to the cable company if that's what you want. So I think it's a good idea to be transparent, but I think we're too early into this, that we don't have enough information to do it at this time, and I'd recommend we vote it down, get more information, and bring it back up at another town meeting. Thank you.
Mr. Deal.
Hi, Jeff Deal, 10 Village Way. And as a former legislator, I think you guys probably know, every meeting I had, I was involved in debates on bills, was recorded, televised, or audio, or both. So I think transparency for government's fantastic, I think this would be serving, having served on Finance Committee, I think it'd be enlightening to a lot of us to see how the decisions are made, how the work is divvied up and all that. But as far as your concerns about the technology or cost, I'm not sure if you're aware, all the police officers in this room and out on the streets right now, every radio conversation they have, every phone call they make is recorded. The technology exists, the cost is borne by the town, so it's totally possible to have this, these conversations recorded and provided in a way that the public can consume. So I'm in favor of the, the, what is it? The bill.
What is it?
This warrant item, thank you. I haven't been on the floor in a while, I apologize.
Ma'am.
Elizabeth Murphy, Westwood Drive, and let me just apologize to all of you, because I am solely responsible for this article, I believe, because I was an uneducated recording secretary. I took the position, and just to let you know that the town administrator did bet me as capable to be a recorder, I had never, I do not have a history of being a recording secretary. I will say town council is an error saying that it's not a public record until someone requests it, because I just took a class with the Attorney General's Office and educated myself on how to do the job properly. I have no problem giving up a recording. It was my understanding, it was my recording for my purposes. And I do take offense to Mr. McNeil saying that the minutes do not reflect what happens in the meeting, it might not catch all the guffaws on the increases that we've seen in the Article Two tonight. The Finance Committee is the most diverse, intelligent committee I have ever seen. That's not what I had in my head about a Finance Committee a couple years ago, but to know what they do for the town and the fact that they have a separate entity looking out for all of our finances, and those recommendations on these votes take them to heart, because they put a lot of consideration and so much time, more time than I put in, and I get paid. You pay me to do what I do. They get nothing other than, hopefully, a good choice from all of the residents of this town. And I just wanted to say that, and I do apologize. I will say, I was not going to vote for it, because Mr. McNeil told me that there would be a cost to it in time and effort, and like the Board of Health was saying, it's resources we don't really have to put towards it, so maybe bring it to a state level where all the state meetings could be recorded, and then you could get state funding for recorders, I don't know. But anyway, that's my case.
Mr. Lyman.
I'll address a couple of comments made here. The first one that resonated was this would be burdensome for people. The open meeting law is burdensome for people. The public record law is burdensome for people. In fact, the most recent amendments to the public record law are a real pain. However, people are entitled to have access to records, and the law provides that they receive them, and we've managed to get around the burden. No-cost information. Suggestion was made this should be a capital item. A capital item is a purchase for $10,000 or more with a useful life for more than five years. We're talking about telephone adapters. Every office has a telephone line, and our phone systems are fully capable of recording whatever is requested. You simply have a pre-programmed button, you push it, and you record it. It's recorded on the server, it can automatically be emailed to WHCA. The State of Massachusetts Department of Unemployment holds more meetings than probably any other organization in the state, and that's how they record their hearings. So it's nonsense to say that it's burdensome, that we can't afford it. I think it's a reality that we today are more informed than we were five or 10 years ago, and that's probably because of the requirements that we operate under. This is simply one more requirement that we should be operating under in order to provide transparency and information to the public. Thank you.
Mr. Small.
Frederick Small, 87 Hilltop Road, Whitman Hansen Regional School Committee, as well as I chair the Whitman Middle School Building Project. Talking about the building project for a moment, we started a few years ago in a road. When we started, every single one of our meetings were taped. They're not broadcast live, but they're taped and they're put out by WHCA, and I would like to thank them for everything that they do for us, because they do a wonderful job. It's imperative for us to make sure that we're transparent and the public knows how we got from a group of 15 or so individuals to coming up and saying, "We need a five-through-eight new middle school with an auditorium." We had nine different plans to choose. We recently had a debate as far as what energy type of usage and which path to go on. If anybody wants to go and look, there are links from the town website, there's links from the school's website, and there are links on social media. It's wmsproject.org, there's my little advertisement. We have all our meeting minutes published, all of our meetings have been recorded there on there, as well as our community forums have been taped, and those are out there. It's nothing for us to be able to be taped. We want people to see what we're doing. As a member of various different boards and committees, I have nothing that I want more than for people to be able to go out and look and see what there is. And that's why I implore you, please, support this article. The technology is there, people deserve to know. Very simple. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Danielle Clancy, 21 Bloss Road, Board of Health Chair. We had a meeting last Monday, we discussed this, this article came up for discussion at our meeting, we are in support of this article, we welcome the transparency at the Board of Health, and we, I think the town will figure out how to get it done if we support it. Thank you.
Other discussion of Article 40. Yes, Ms. Varley.
Dawn Varley, Town Clerk, 135 Washington Street. So I, I'm the keeper of the records for the town, I have been for quite a few years, and I look back at my records, I had somebody come in today and they were looking for minutes to a committee, and I didn't have them back to January of 2022. And this problem happens all the time. I send out a memo every year to every board and every committee that they must file their meeting minutes with me, things like that, so that the public can have access to them. They don't even follow that, so I would like to know, Mr. Lyman, and to the Board of Selectmen, who is going to police this? Who is going to make sure? They don't even file, contracts by the Board of Selectmen that are signed by the Board of Selectmen aren't filed with me, and that is in our bylaws to have those things filed with my office. So I think we've gotten contracts for the Fire Department Library that were dated four years ago. So who, if I can't police it, and when I ask for these things and it goes on deaf ears, like I said, I do send out a memo every year. And I do have to say, I know that this is sort of probably towards the Finance Committee, that is one board that does file their minutes regularly, and I'd like to thank them for that. And also going to training, from what I understood is if you use an electronic format to create your minutes, and once you've created your minutes, Michelle, you can attest to this, that that recording can be erased. Once you've created your minutes, that the recording is not the actual record, the paper minutes should reflect what happened in the meeting, and they should say, who, there's very specific, and I also put that out when I sent my memo of what is required, it's supposed to say who's in attendance, and so many things that are not being kept in compliance, and I, like I do, I send it out every year and... You want to correct me if I'm wrong, or?
Ms. McNulty.
I did want to make that clarification to the speaker up there, and Dawn, you actually kind of encapsulated it. You are correct that if you make the recording to assist in drawing, drafting up your minutes, you can then delete the recording. The point I was trying to make, and I think Mr. Gold Rosen had even referred to it, was that if somebody asks for that recording, though, in between the time that you make it and you've drafted your minutes and you've deleted it, it is then a public record you have to provide. I wasn't saying that all recordings are not public records, so I just want to make that clarification, because I believe you are correct, but again, if somebody in that interim time asks for it, you're going to have to release it.
Mr. Anderson.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just want to just take another brief minute just to talk about what the law requires, and I think, you know, town council has made it clear. The law, open meeting law, requires that the meeting minutes reflect the substantive deliberations of the committee. If in fact the law required a complete end-to-end recording of the meeting, we'd be hiring stenographers, not recording secretaries. So again, I think it's important to note the cost of this. Again, the cost, the personal cost of this is to the many boards and committees in this town, like Mr. Gold Rosen spoke of, that don't have the capacity for this, and really, there is very little information that is going to be gleaned out of a recording that is not part of the official meeting minutes. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Chris George, 4 Shelley Lane. In preparation for this meeting, I, like Mr. Galvin, have spent time at other meeting boards this year, not as much as I would like, but I spent six hours on my vacation watching school committee meetings. I spent time watching selectmen meetings. The one board that stands up here and recommends something for every one of these articles, I cannot watch. They meet. Without a lot of attendance, I've been to a Finance Committee meeting before. They're not great, but what we're talking about here is a simple solution that would allow me to understand where you come up with your recommendations from. Quite frankly, it's scary to hear any official stand up here and talk about a personal cost to have a record of a public meeting that I can watch and I can understand in context. That is scary. It should be a no-brainer. Meetings, meeting minutes do not reflect the tenor of a meeting. There are exemptions that you can take to meet an executive session if there is a sensitive topic, but quite frankly, this is a no-brainer. We should vote for it. For those of us that want to be involved but can't be there every Tuesday night, or can't be at multiple meetings at the same time, or need to do it on our own time, that should be available to us.
Other discussion, Mr. Lyman.
I'd like to point out that what we're talking about here is not changing the public record law. The public record law says that meetings shall be memorialized in minutes that are permanent records, and by permanent, I mean forever. Minutes of meetings can never be destroyed, they're never at a date. You go into the clerk's office, or you go into my office, you can find minute notes from 1875, when we first started as the town of Whitman taking minutes. The point is, this is ancillary, it's something to allow people to have a better view and a more complete view of what's going on. And frankly, I have been a member of a board or committee in this town since 1993, with the two years I took off to regain my sanity. And in those meetings, the vast majority of them have been recorded and televised. I have no problem with that, that's part of what being a public member is. I frankly have difficulty understanding why anyone would object to a recording of a meeting, and let's, let's be clear on this, a recording, it's not a tape, I'm not proposing a tape, there's no mystery about cost. Tech- a tape. There's no mystery about cost. Tech guy is right behind me and he can tell you. Our system, our telephone system supports recorded sessions. They're easy to capture. They're easy to send. It's not going to be burdensome for anyone. And in answer to Ms. Varley's question, every contract the Board of Selectmen assigned is on file in the network under shared contracts. Every single one of them. Well, we can fix that. But every contract is there. I can't account for what happens with other boards and committees because in the time that I served as town administrator, I spent more time than I care to remember telling people, you need to file that with the town clerk. Because they're records. They're part of our history. And sooner or later, someone's going to come up with something that's going to make me say, okay, it was 11 to 12 years ago. Let's go back and look. And believe it or not, we do record searches for that. So what we're talking about here is a really simplistic thing. We want to make a recording when people meet.
Sir, Ryan Tressel, 210 Temple Street. I'm also the chair of the Community Preservation Committee. I spend a lot of my time, like Mr. Galvin, Mr. George, watching the selectmen meetings and the school committee meetings. And I'll say, my daughter has never thought I was cooler than when I was on YouTube, when I spoke in front of the Board of Selectmen because I got to be on YouTube. I'm very much in supportive of the idea of these committee meetings being recorded and being available to the public. However, it does seem, Mr. Linum just said, he's like, it's really simple. Who is making the recording? Is it the recording secretary? Is it my responsibility as the chair? Who is going to train the committees? I just feel like there's a lot of work that needs to be done to make this. And I would fully support this in principle. I just think that this seems very hapdash kind of, just record it, do it on iPhone. We'll get you extensions. My question is, none of the language in this petition speaks to how this will actually be done. And I think that that probably could be done and codified in a town meeting warrant article rather than just being like, hey, like, am I going to be trained on how to do this? Is it going to be our recording secretary who's going to do it? I'm fine with whatever system you come up with. I just think there needs to be a system before we just vote. And then it's, you know, the idea being that like when we meet next month, like, I don't know who is going to be telling me how to record this, how to send it, all these things. That is not at all spoken to in this article. So that would be my recommendation, is that that get codified before we vote on it. Because I think that it's, to say that it's a simple thing that's been recorded, I think needs, there needs to be more kind of specificity in how that will be done to help the boards and committees to do this. Because I think it's a great idea in principle. I just want to make sure that it's done correctly and that it is done kind of uniformly so that it is, that if it ends up being something that there are extensions on the phones, that it's, or whatever, there are recording devices that are put in, that we are trained on how to use them. And it's not something that, you know, the zoning board's done on an iPhone and it sounds terrible. And the Community Preservation Board is done on a phone. It sounds different. Like, uniformity and specificity, I think, in how this will be implemented, I think would be very helpful before we voted on it. Thank you.
Mr. Goldrosen.
You know, I don't want to belabor this point, but I do have to respond to Mr. Linum. Yes, all the meetings that you've participated in for 30 or 40 years have been recorded because you've been in the selectmen's office. You've been a town administrator. The selectmen's meeting room is set up for taping. Lower Town Hall, where we hold our meetings, is not. And I'd be all for it if the town, many towns do have their meeting rooms set up for recording. And if the town wants to spend the money to install that equipment, that's great. But it's not there. And you talk about phones. I don't know what phones are down there. Okay? You're coming up with something and you haven't even done the simple thing, which is to put the minutes online so everybody can read the minutes. That could have been done without any bylaw by the town administrator, the town clerk, people in Town Hall, and that hasn't been done. So do the simple thing first. And I, you know, I gather this has something to do with conflicts with the Finance Committee, which, you know, we're not part of. But talk to each other, come to an understanding, work things out, and don't just create a bylaw that creates a lot of work for people without some organized plan for implementing it.
Other discussion of Article 40. Mr. McNulty.
So I don't want to keep us here any longer than we need to be. You know, I think we've sort of gone around the room here. And I appreciate the views of everyone. I certainly respect the Finance Committee and I certainly respect the fact that Elizabeth, the recording secretary, you know, stood up and made a comment as well. You know, the one big reason I think this whole petition started, and again, I was not the one who initiated this petition. I did sign the petition, but I did not initiate it, meaning I did not have the idea to bring it forward. Again, it goes back to the fact that I did request a copy of a meeting that was not provided. And within 48 hours of that meeting, I requested the recording. So if the actual meeting minutes were not finalized at that point, why was the recording deleted? So, you know, to go into the further conversation here, at the end of the day, you know, there has to be some stipulation within this article as far as to how we're going to, number one, record the meetings. I agree. I certainly appreciate the fact that, you know, there was some additional information that may in fact be missing. But there was quite a few, you know, people that did comment on a variety of different devices. And while we have to solidify on a recording, I mean, could we possibly use the Board of Selectmen meeting room a little differently and actually have the Board of Selectmen meeting there on Tuesdays and have another board or committee meeting there on Wednesdays or Thursdays and shift things around? I mean, there's all kinds of different perspectives here. But at the end of the day, I think it's important for us to understand that we're trying to create an additional layer of transparency here. And, you know, when recordings are deleted, when they're requested, something tells me that that's not right. Something had to have occurred or had to have been occurring in those meetings for those recordings to be deleted. And frankly, I shouldn't have had to go and recover those recordings to get the information to find out that unfortunately, there wasn't, you know, they weren't matching, the actual meeting was not matching the actual meeting notes that were, you know, slated to be, you know, prepared or whatnot. So at the end of the day, I think there's a couple of different, you know, conversations going on here. I'm 100% for this article. You know, I agree that there could have been more details put into this. And I think if, you know, again, if there was more thought put into it earlier in the year, I think there would have been, you know, some additional details. But frankly, again, other communities around us, Hanson, East Bridgewater, they're all doing this, using the, you know, recorders that we, you know, buy for $30 to $60. But again, it goes back to my, you know, initial, you know, mentioning of the fact that the recordings were actually deleted. How can we actually be transparent if we're actually deleting recordings that are being requested? Again, I fully support and respect the Finance Committee, but something is just not right here. And I think we need to do something, whether we do it tonight or we continue this to the next town meeting and, you know, vote this forward.
Ms. Otina. We have a motion to move the question. We have a second. All in favor of moving the question will vote, say yes. Oppose, no. All in favor of Article 40, please signify by saying yes. Oppose, no. Article 40 is adopted. Article 41, see if the town will vote to transfer $388,440.54 from free cash to the town stabilization account or take any other action relative thereto. Motion and a second. Discussion on 41. All in favor of Article 41, say yes. Oppose, no. Article 41 is adopted unanimously. Article 42, to see if the town will vote to appropriate a sum of money from available free cash, said funds to be used to reduce the amount of money to be raised by taxation for fiscal year 2024, or take any other action relative thereto. Motion and a second. Ms. Carter. We have a proposed amendment to 42, amended to read, to see if the town will vote to appropriate $455,323 from available free cash, said funds to be used to reduce the amount of money to be raised by taxation for fiscal year 2024, or take any other action relative thereto. We have a motion. We have a motion. We have a second. All right. Discussion of the proposed amendment. All in favor of adopting the amended article, I'm sorry, adopting the amendment to Article 42, please say yes. Oppose, no. Discussion, then the article is amended, discussion of the amended article. We have a motion. We have a second. All in favor of adopting Article 42 as amended, say yes. Oppose, no. Article 42 is adopted as amended unanimously. Finally, Article 43, to see if the town will vote to accept the following streets that have been constructed to meet the planning board and DPW requirements as public ways or take any other action relative thereto. Constitution Circle, Fieldstone Circle, Foxway, Freedom Lane, Grove Way, Henning Drive, Jacob Lane, John Young Way, Magnolia Circle, Meyer Farm, Old Colony Way, Orchard Way, Patriot Lane, Peyton Place, Railroad Avenue, Riverbird Circle, Robin Road, Rosina Way, Terry Road, Valley Road, Victoria Drive, Wild Turkey Lane, and Winslow Circle. We have a motion and a second. We have a motion to amend Article 43 to delete Winslow Circle. We have a motion and a second. Discussion of the amendment. All in favor of amending Article 43 to delete Winslow Circle from the list? Oppose, no. Okay, Article 43 is amended. Discussion of the amended article. Ms. Landeville.
Yes. What does this do to the DPW budget by accepting all these streets?
Mr. Martin.
Ms. Martin, 54 Park Ave. Nothing really. It actually helps our budget. By adding these roads to the accepted road list, we benefit from more Chapter 90 money each year. These roads, although many of them are 20, 15, 20 years old, they were never really ever officially accepted. So they never got on, we never got the benefit of the Chapter 90 funds for the mileage. Although it's 2.8 miles for these 22 roads, it's still, it could be, there is a formula, but it could be 5,000 to 6,000 or more per mile every year added to the Chapter 90 funds. There's a formula. It's kind of complicated how they figured out with unemployment and mileage, et cetera. But it's just a group of roads that were built to town specifications and were never, for one reason or another, fell through the cracks and never accepted at town meeting.
Mr. Deal.
Yeah, Jeff Deal, 10 Village Way. Have any of these streets been plowed or provided services by DPW up until this point?
Yes.
They have, even though they haven't been adopted by the town?
Yes.
So towns like, or streets like mine, like Village Way, that don't get services and aren't adopted?
So the difference between these roads and your driveway are...
But no, not my driveway. The street that serves four houses. I'll take care of my driveway. Thank you.
So all these roads here were built to planning board specifications. They have drainage. They have curbing.
I understand the criteria. However, they weren't adopted by the town, but were receiving town services. I just want to make sure that's an understanding.
That's correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Additional discussion of the amended Article 43. Ms. O'Leary.
I don't, I don't know if anybody from the zoning board is here, but it's my understanding, and maybe legal counsel could happen, that there's different types of roads. There's private roads that don't meet building standard. And then there's private-public roads that just haven't been accepted but meet those standards. Does anybody have any information about that? Because I'm wondering if that could answer Mr. Deal's question. You don't have that on hand. Okay. All right. Thank you.
Yes, Ms. Landeville.
Why was Winslow Circle?
Mr. Martin.
So Winslow Circle is a driveway off of Winter Street. Does have a street sign that says Winslow Circle, but it's a dirt road. It goes out to one recess lot. It's not a public way. It's never been serviced by the town. We don't do anything with that road. Again, all these roads on here were built, they went before the planning board. They were built to specifications, but for one reason or another, they never made it 15, 10, 20, depending on what road you're looking at. They never made it to town meeting floor to be voted. Mr. Deal is correct. We are servicing these roads. So we're, if there's a water main break on any of these roads, we fix it. We plow the roads. We do potholes on the roads. The difference between these roads and, you know, Mr. Deal's road is that...
It's not my road. There's four people, four families.
It's not based on how many people live on the road. It's based on how wide is the road? Can two cars fit down at the same time? Is there curbing? Is there drainage? Did they go before the planning board to build the road as a subdivision? Things like that. These roads, we're working on them. We're repairing them. We maintain them. Let's vote them and get the money that the town deserves because we've been paying for, you know, we've been putting the work in on them anyway.
Mr. Deal.
I apologize because I know this is the last article. I only want to make a point, and I think this ties in well to the previous article we had on having public meeting. It'd be nice if planning board meetings were recorded so that we knew contracts made with developers that didn't create a street that conformed for the town to then adopt. We'd like to know what those discussions were at the time with those planning boards. So I guess I'm sort of dovetailing two things together. But I do approve of this, I wouldn't say amendment, it's this article. I just wanted to make sure we clarify that there are town streets that were getting service from the town that weren't adopted yet. So streets like mine, not mine, four families. It would be nice if we got additional services temporarily while maybe worked towards getting those streets adopted. That's my only point. Thank you.
Further discussion of 43 is amended. Okay, all in favor of Article 43 is amended, say yes. Oppose, no. The amended Article 43 is adopted unanimously. Thank you all for coming out tonight. We had a very nice, robust discussion. And thank you. We're not done yet. We're not done yet. I'd like to thank our tellers tonight, Michelle Lamentina, Larry Roach, and Matthew Harden. And I will undertake a motion to adjourn. Second, we are adjourned.